Page number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible action and vote in regard to the acceptance.
Second.
Hold on, hold on one second. You hear that? I'm gonna touch it. Alright, I'm just trying to speak really loud, if you can't hear me, just raise your hand and I'll try and speak louder. Sorry about that. Page number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible action vote in regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meeting of June 27th, 2018, to be accepted and approved by the town council. So the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman McGrady. Any questions? If there being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Page number two, resolution eighteen dash zero zero four, multi-hazard mitigation plan. Mayor embody request discussion and possible vote on resolution eighteen dash zero zero four, the multi-hazard mitigation plan. Mayor?
Mayan works. But again, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, please excuse my not having a tie, we have the national night out going on up at Camp Mayan, and I covered for all of you and explained to everyone that the council has a meeting tonight, so we'll go back there and cook a few more hamburgers. But I asked Chief Silver to come here tonight, explain to you this mitigation proposal that will allow us in the future to make sure that we are a recipient of any and all grant of money that is requested by the town, so I would ask, I would defer to Chief Silver at this point in time, please.
Chief?
Council, council president. This resolution has been floating around for a few years, when the past EMA director resigned, the mayor wanted us to go through his office and see if there was anything we can find. We were able to take this in fireman's language, do some CPR on it, and bring it back to life. What we have is a resolution that was started in 2012. It was complete, but it wasn't, never made it through its final process. So we're able to hook up with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency, and we were able to put this in action. It does two things for the town of North Providence. The first thing it does is it puts together a solid plan so that we could find grant money, and we could find money for hazard mitigation after an incident. So if there was a hurricane, federal government comes in for the citizens and the town, this would, by design, show that we need, and it would already predict what we had, it's a pre-plan basically. The other thing it does is we were able to capture some money. So we're able to get about eleven, close to the $12,000 from the government because we put this plan together, because it was, it's actually the first hazard mitigation plan for the town of North Providence. So it is a staple to our community. We need this resolution signed, if possible, I would like to have it within a couple of days, only because this grant will go away, or the money portion of this will go away on the end of September. So basically, it's a plan that's designed to do nothing but predict hazards that would happen, so that the town, the mayor, the fire department, the police department, EMA director, and the town council has a design plan, so when you go to Federal Emergency Management Agency and say, "We have this disaster," you could say, "We have a plan to fix it." It's for our future, and it's a good thing for the community.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any questions, Chief Silver? Motion to approve resolution eighteen dash zero zero four.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman DeLorenzo, seconded by Councilman McGrady. Any further questions? If there being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Page number three, purchase and sales agreement. Mayor embody request discussion and possible vote for purchase and sales agreement with Rose Pate Family Living Trust. Mayor?
So I think everyone here is familiar with this negotiation to put an agreement together with the Pate family, a couple of the members here this evening. I know that this council voted to approve up to spending $3 million for open space for recreational purposes. This is the first parcel, you have a purchase and sales agreement before you, that I think everyone is aware as to where it is, what the potential of this property is, for a couple of new fields, a multi-use field, and a new baseball field. That being said, the agreement calls for a $725,000 purchase, but also with a donation, a donation by the Pate family, $50,000, so that we would be able to recognize their family in some type of signage at the field. We did agree to that, so I think before you is that purchase and sales agreement was for 725, which is really 675. Now, I know, again, we approved up to $3 million spending, so I know that there may be a question, oh, okay, so what are we doing, how much are we borrowing here? We'll be meeting with the owners of another parcel, I think it's on Friday morning, to further those negotiations. As of this point in time, we, because we are financially solvent, we will be fronting this purchase with the town's finances at this point in time, to wait to see about what we can negotiate for the purchase of the second piece of property, so that we go out and borrow, you know, one time. So I would really appreciate your support in agreeing to support this purchase and sales agreement. And I would answer any further questions.
Council President, I have one question. So the purchase price is 725,000, and the seller is giving a gift to the town for 50,000?
That's correct.
Okay.
But because of the financial paperwork, you know, it has to be for 725, and they'll be giving the town back 50.
Mayor, I understand, you know, you've explained this in previous meetings, how you're going about doing this, but we do have some residents in the audience this evening who live around that property, who are wondering if there's a plan being available at some point in time that they could take a look at as to how those fields will be placed, and where the access roads will come in, and so I'm just...
Yes, we will be aiming before, we will be aiming before we shoot, so to say, you will see a plan as to the way both those fields will be set up. It'd be a multi-use field, as everyone here knows that we need to get some, take some of that play from the high school field, so that, you know, it just can't rejuvenate, there's just too much play on the field. So that being said, yes, they will, we'll be meeting with the neighbors, we'll keep you informed as to what the plan is. At this point in time, the only thing that's before us is the purchase of the property. In talking with the council and discussing this, we've been talking about this for quite a few months, in the last thirty-two years, we haven't added an additional playing field in the town for the youth of this community, and at the same time, the population has increased somewhere around 22 percent. So we're, we're behind the eight ball. We're in the position now, because we are financially solvent, so to say, to purchase a couple of pieces of property for the youth and for the longevity of the sport programs in the town of North Providence.
I think it'd be better suited to build homes over there, we're gonna have a lot of playgrounds if you start that there.
I, I understand your feeling as a neighbor.
It's better suited for the area. It's a residential area, we don't want cars all parked in front of our houses. It's gonna bring down the valuation of these, these houses here. Can you guys come up to the microphone if you want to speak?
Sure.
And just state your name for the record, sir.
Frank Davis, I live with Mark, he's my partner, and when we bought this home, I pressed the real estate agent who was selling it to us about that property. She told me, more than once, that it was house lots, so I didn't investigate any further, that's my bad. No one knew about this ball field, no neighbor, no one in this neighborhood knew anything about this until after Mark signed the purchase and sales agreement of that house, and at the closing. This is all a surprise to us, I'm not against it, but you need to tell us exactly what's going in our backyard, and the dirt from your mountains is all over my windows, screens, patio furniture. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I say something?
Right.
So I will state for the record right now that I am in favor of this, and I have been asking for years for us to develop land within District Two. So once you pass a certain section within our area, there are no parks and public playgrounds. And the field that is currently on Ivan Street is in, is in significant disrepair. There is a, there is piping for the drainage of the field that goes through the field that would need to be ripped up, it's too costly. I will say that, we've, we on this council have held two meetings on this now, and we've consistently, at both of those meetings, have relayed to the mayor that we want this land not to be a hindrance to anyone who lives adjacent to that property. So we are understanding of where those lights will be placed, to ensure that they don't, you know, bother any of the residents. We are asking the mayor that there be parking within the facility, so they are not parking on the street. We are asking the mayor to put up some sort of barricade, not a barricade, but plantings around the back of those houses, so we don't hinder the privacy that you guys currently have. So we have asked, we have placed significant thought into how that field will, how that property will be developed, and how that property will blend in with that current area.
Thank you, I would prefer you vote after we see something in writing, that's all I have to tell you.
I'm so sorry.
Isn't there something in writing, isn't there some type of a, before you vote on this, isn't there a schematic or a blueprint or something that we can see? There must be something somewhere.
So what we were given was an idea of what could fit. So basically, if I'm correct, Mayor, they took the largest field in town, and they placed that on the GIS map, so that would, that would show the, show us what a field on that property would look like, and what the surrounding around that field, how much property would be available. And I'll let the mayor speak, because he's more familiar with the actual layout of the property than I am, but I am under the understanding that the current access road will be the only access road. I am under the understanding that after a ball field is placed there, there is significant space for parking, and significant space to put other stuff, benches, walking tracks, whatever comes about.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'd like to just mention that my backyard faces this grass or brush that's growing over my head. Nobody's taking care of it.
Well, I can't...
I have a retainer wall over there that separates this property. Now, all this grass used to be maintained by the Pate family, but it's no longer maintained. It has to be cut.
Well, I could tell...
It does not look right.
I could tell you that once...
We've got wild animals in there, going in there, snakes, you name it.
I don't think any of us can speak for how the Pates are maintaining the property, but I can tell you that I, but this mayor will, once we take possession of that property, will ensure that that grass is cut and it's presentable.
Can I add your name, sir? Your name?
I'm Peter Florio. My wife is a Pate. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this matter?
Yeah, I mean, for example, like, this town, I had an issue back in 2000...
When I ran for political office in this town, we purchased a piece of property for $250,000, they're still sitting there 18 years later doing nothing. Why are we purchasing another piece of property now? Why aren't we utilizing what we spent 18 years ago with grant money, that I was convinced that they were gonna change it and fix it into a park and a place to use? And it's still sitting there, and I left this state for six years, came back, and it's still sitting there 18 years later, a rock pile like I told you that we purchased that can't be used, but yet now you want us to spend $725,000? For what? I just wanna know, why are we utilizing something that we already paid for? The tax pay is already paid for, it's been sitting there for 18 years doing absolutely nothing. Why can't we fix that part? That's right down in the bottom of the hill to Stephen Oldie, that we could build something. That's all I wanna know, why we're spending another 700,000 when we already purchased a piece of property that's sitting there doing nothing?
Stephen Oldie Park?
Yeah, it's on the park, it's a Stephen Oldie Park. We spent for 40 million dollars, 20,000.
We argued all day. Anyone else?
Shane P. Shea, Rabbit Drive, member of the North Providence Planning Board. Just to bring it up, obviously this has to go through planning, just to kinda let the neighbors know, at that time, they will have input on all those different things, so they do know that there's a lot of steps to it, so they don't feel that that kinda left in the dark, I just wanna let that know that they'll see exactly what's going on, and it has to go through a process, I just want everyone to be supportive of it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further questions?
Mr. President?
Councilman?
Just to build off of what Mr. P. Shea said, in addressing some of the concerns from earlier, if I recall correctly, the first time that this issue came before us was at a special meeting, and at that time, the mayor had given us his assurances that there would be actual plans submitted to us, this is just the beginning part of the process, the purchase of the property, or at least the permission to purchase the property, and then, as Councilman DeStefanis eloquently stated before, he's, and there's no reason not to take him at his word, that he will be submitting to us, you know, the entirety of the plans, and will be involved in the process of approval, so we wanna just give you those assurances and relay what happened at that meeting.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to address a couple of issues. I can guarantee you and the neighbors that this will be a first-class facility, and we, as a town, wanna be great neighbors. We will do that, we'll work along with the neighbors to make sure everyone is satisfied. I will reiterate what Councilman DeStefanis said, when we look at this property, and the size of this property, and we place two fields on this property, there's significant parking on the site. I will treat that as if I was a neighbor of that property. But I also wanna address one statement that Mr. Florio said, as far as building homes there. If you wanna talk about the economics of this property, I think 14 homes could be built on that property. Now, usually, you want, let's talk about cost. So, it's, the rule of thumb is 2.5 children per household. Let's say only two, that would be 28 additional children to educate, that's our problem. The cost to educate a student today is roughly $15,000. I say this all the time, this town, our town, we don't have the availability of open space, so we can't attract big business here, i.e. the town of Johnston, the new Citizens Plaza, that's gonna bring an enormous amount of new tax dollars to the town. We don't have that availability. In the meantime, we're trying to preserve what open space we have left here, so that the stu, the youth of our, of our town will have a great future here. So we're just trying to bobble the ball, but I think, if you wanna look at this in a business aspect of it, 'cause this is a business, if we bought that property and didn't do a thing with it, that property in four years has a payback, just because we're not building 14 homes there. So, that being said, I think it's a great thing for the town, and I assure the neighbors that in the end, once we take control of that property, we can clean it up, and we will clean it up. Right now, we can't, we don't own it. So that being said, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I think it's the right thing, I think it's the right thing for the future of this community. Thank you.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents for purchase and sale. Agreed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman DeLorenzo, seconded by Councilman McGrady. Any questions? If there being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Page number four, Colonial Power Group, mayor embody request discussion with Colonial Power Group on municipal electric aggregation. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I ask the individuals from Colonial Power to come before the council to explain to you their business, which I think could possibly save the residents of our town some money in their energy costs. So at this point in time, I would ask the individuals from Colonial Power to address the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear before the council. By way of background, my name is Tom Ahern, I'm a Rhode Island resident, I ran the Public Utilities Commission, Division of Public Utilities, for four governors during a duration of 19 years. I know a little bit about municipal aggregation, and hopefully my peer will be able to explain to you how the program works in Massachusetts. In essence, municipal aggregation is a new concept, that only became effective here a year ago September, when the House of Representatives of the Senate met in September in special session. Municipal aggregation has been available in Massachusetts for many years. There are 300 communities en masse that are eligible to participate in municipal aggregation. Of those 300, 150 have, 150 have chosen municipal aggregation, of which Colonial Power serves about 100 of those. In essence, it's a billing mechanism, whereby the town enters into an agreement with an aggregator of power, that then distributes, that then provides that power to all the residents and businesses of North Providence. They don't distribute it, Narragansett Electric is still responsible for the poles, the wiring, it's just that Colonial Power goes out and buys that power at many different opportune times. Narragansett Electric right now does not care about buying electricity, they don't have to, they don't make anything. The only money they make on electricity is to distribute the electricity from the head end to the homes. They do make power, they do make money on some power, and that power is the renewable energy. Can you imagine that? The PUC gave them a premium of 2.75 percent to put renewable energy in their load. Colonial Power could do that, but we're not in, our primary purpose is to provide your constituents with choice, lower cost, and an opportunity for the town to have a revenue straight. Now, I know you're very busy, I would ask Mark, the president, principal of Colonial Power, I'm what they call the market development person, if you will, with Colonial Power, when I was at the PUC, they came in, made a presentation to me, I thought it was too good to be true, I didn't believe it. I drilled them, and now, um, hand the glove with them, if you will. So Mark, would you take a few minutes and just explain what...
Absolutely, thank you very much, Mr. President. Mark Capadona, Colonial Power, Five Mount Royal Ave, Marlboro, Marlboro, Mass. Municipal aggregation, we're talking about the supply portion of your bill, there's two parts to a bill, distribution and supply. We're talking about a single line item change that would, where your standard offer is what everyone gets if they haven't made a choice in the marketplace, that would change to North Providence municipal aggregation. That's the only change. So if you have low-income discount, a budget bill, automatic withdrawal, all of those, all of those things are gonna stay in place. What we're gonna bring is a choice from an energy standpoint, if the town wanted to do something long-term, currently, you're exposed to rate changes every six months. If the town wanted to do a three-year fixed rate, your choice, you can do it. The good thing about the program, all the town does is say, "We want to bundle the residents together," and everyone that's on standard offer would be put into that pool. At the end of the day, it's the resident that makes the decision whether they wanna participate or not. Hot button item, I wanna make sure that we're clear on this. It's an opt-out municipal aggregation. What does that mean? That means every resident that's on standard office service would receive this benefit until they opted out. So if they received the mailing, everyone, prior to this program starting, there's a small local, and then there's a state process before we get a chance to go out to bid. But after that happens, once the program was announced, everyone would have a choice in front of them, that they haven't had, this coming winter, things are going to be bad, it's gonna be expensive. But there could be another choice, if you had a program up and running. So at that time, the consumer would get something in the mail, they'd have a choice, do I wanna stay with National Grid, or do I wanna stay with the town's program? If I do nothing, I'll automatically be enrolled in the town's program? It requires no action on behalf of the end user or the consumer to participate in this program. They'll automatically be switched, if the town said, "I'm going back out to bid," they'd be automatically switched to that new supplier. So the benefits is very easy for the end user. And again, as Mr. Ahern said, for all the touch points, for the end consumer, it's still National Grid, you have a problem with your meter, call National Grid, powers out, call National Grid, issue with your meet, with your bill, call National Grid. This is, this program is all about the electricity running through the wire, or the electron that's in the wire. In a nutshell, that's what the process is. There is a local and state process that we need to abide by, we need to go on to the PUC and get an order so that we can get out to the marketplace. Fairly simple, no heavy lift, the one thing I will say from your standpoint, there shouldn't be any adds to staff, or any tax dollars used.
Thank you, sir. I heard Mr. Ahern say, "Revenue sharing." How does that work for the town?
So, let's just say that the standard office service was 12 cents, the price of energy now was 10 cents, bought at that time, the difference in that delta, the town could share in some of that savings and pass the rest on to the end user. You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Okay, Councilman.
Is there a cost for the resident to opt-in and opt-out?
I'm sorry, is there a...
Is there a cost?
None. So it's a free opt-in, free opt-out, there's, so it's a contract with the city, that the supplier must opt-out, that's an excellent point, Council. So I'm sure we've all been enticed with a rate that change, you get a rate 7.99, two months later, it's 15 cents. That can't happen here, we kind of turn the tables, we say that every customer can come and go as they want without fear penalty, and it allows us to say, "You're gonna serve this customer base for this amount of time, at this rate, and it cannot change."
Do you, do you need a certain amount of residents to opt-in in order for the program to be effective?
No, so, what the town says, in the contract, right, so it's an electricity service contract, the town says, "I'm willing to bring you my customer base, all of my residents that are on basic service, standard office service, and it's, it's your risk to continue to serve them." It's the perfect symmetry, meaning they're taking the risk, their, their job is to deliver savings, but let's say that basic, standard office service was at 12 cents when we signed the contract, it was a two-year contract, and then standard office service came down to six cents, everyone in town could opt out of the program. Every... Every single resident can opt out of the program. Sign the card, go online, give us a phone call. We're indifferent to whether people stay in the program or not. So everyone could get out of the program, and there wouldn't be any harm or foul. Program would still be up and running. It's just, there would be no customers taking, um, supply.
And then, lastly, how many communities has Colonial Power entered into agreements within, within Rhode Island?
This is my first presentation in front of a, a, a council in Rhode Island. There, there, this concept, there are no municipalities doing this currently in Rhode Island.
So you're currently from Mass, correct?
That's correct.
How many communities are you servicing in Mass?
Uh, seventy-five communities right now.
Seventy-five?
Yes.
Okay.
ColonialPowerGroup.com, and I have a presentation that I'll leave with the clerk of the mayor, just so that if you wanna take a look at it. It's, all, all the information is out there on all the programs that we run in Massachusetts.
Mr. President, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The average cost savings comparatively.
So normally, we, we've seen somewhere between, in the area of five and eight percent of the supply portion of your bill. So I'm getting into the weeds, right? So your bill is made up of distribution and supply. It's about fifty-fifty. So on your total bill, you'd be looking at four percent on the total bill, but as a, uh, from a supply cost, the supply cost might be ten cents. You might be able to get it at nine cents. That's a ten percent savings on the supply cost. But a five percent savings when you take a look at the full bill. Does that make sense, Counselor?
Yes. So an average of five percent.
Uh, five is eight percent. That's a correct statement. That's a correct statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir, uh, thank you very much for the presentation. I just wanted to ask, how long have you been operating with your business in Massachusetts? For how many years?
Since two thousand and two.
Two thousand and two.
You're welcome, Counselor.
Yeah, I-
I'll point out that the Rhode Island Legislature just passed this-
I got a question for the mayor. Mayor, how does this, uh, how does this with our solar farm, with the electricity? No, but we, we got electricity coming from the solar farm to our buildings in the town.
Right. This would be, this would be another way of, of generating some savings for the taxpayers.
So we saving money with this, or do we save money with the solar farm?
Well, this is an additional program of savings. It has nothing to do with the savings that the town would generate by purchasing electricity from the solar company at the end.
And it costs nothing for the town to opt in, or the residents to opt out, and you're saving money.
That's correct.
So it sounds like if it's for free, it's for me.
So if I can't-
We can't save, if we can't save your constituents, if you wanna do business, then we'll be the first ones to tell you. If I can't give you the price of electricity cheaper than Narragansett, you don't wanna talk to me. It's as simple as that.
Mr. President.
I just have a suggestion that maybe you could refer this to your ordinance or finance committee and have these two gentlemen come in and give you, let them, ask them to give you a more defined, uh, plan, so to say. And so, uh, you know, you'll understand a little more.
Yeah, just one final. So sorry. Um, so I understand the legislature, you know, just enacted legislation. Who would be your competitor? You know, would, would, will there be other companies coming in here for kind of the same presentations?
So there are two other people in Massachusetts that do what I do. A company called Good Energy is a, a company that does what I do. I, I don't know if they're active in Massachusetts. And the other company, I don't believe, um, only because, um, it, it's a combined company that has municipal contacts, and they lean on those in Massachusetts unless they have contacts down here in Rhode Island as well. But it's Peregrine and Bay State did combine their forces to, to get into the aggregation marketplace.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Just one last question, in general, if you know, talking, maybe a list of those communities that they do a business with in Massachusetts so that, uh, we can, you know, do our due diligence and talk with them, see what's happening there.
Counselor?
Question for either one of you gentlemen. Uh, with regards to our elderly population, which is, is rather significant, um, is it gonna be easy for them to opt out if they so choose? Are they gonna get any information in the mail with detailed instructions how to do so?
So the answer is yes. It's going to be simple. So when they're calling us, we work for you. We're happy to have them opt out. So I don't think the elderly population, you can easily go online, do it yourself, click on a button, we'll have a webpage, and you can opt out. The elderly community can call us on a one-eight-hundred number, or we send out a mailing required by the PUC to, that every customer has. They simply sign their name, put it back in a stamp, already, it's already a stamp addressed, they send it back to us. They're never enrolled in the program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have a motion to send this to the finance committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, second by Councilman Brady. Any further questions? Any being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, you have a question? You have to come up.
How do you, how do you sign people in?
You have to, can you state your name for the record, ma'am?
How do you, how do they sign people in? My name, Ebony Ababola.
So it, it's an opt-out aggregation, and as long as they're a resident, if they're still on standard offer, so if you had made a choice already, you had a constellation of your supplier, you wouldn't receive this mailing because you wouldn't change your, your decision. But if you were on standard offer, you'd be automatically switched after the thirty-day opt-out. You'd receive a, a letter saying, this is the Towns program, this is, uh, National Grid's program, this is, this is the different prices. You'd be automatically switched. We don't have to do anything. If you don't want to opt out, you simply sign the card, send it back, and you'll never be enrolled.
Okay.
And, just so you know, if that one girl who said, I'm not having this program for any reason, sign that card, get to call her out. No fee, no penalty.
So you know the ones, you know, the ones that send those peoples and knock on doors and say, do you, do you sign this? I just wanna see your bill and a letter from him. So many stamps of water.
This program turns a pain on that whole thing. It's an organized office. So those, alcohol, alcohol, liquor, drinks, if you don't have any.
Okay. Thanks, sorry.
Okay, a motion's been made, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number five, containers and trash removal. Mayor, embody your request discussion of possible vote on containers and trash removal. Mayor?
Just quickly, Mr. Chairman, I know during our budget sessions, there was a considerable amount of discussion concerning new trash receptacles and, um, you know, we opted not to purchase them this year. Since then, I've been in some deep negotiations with MTG. They seem to have a pretty decent, uh, plan, uh, that they like to propose to us so that maybe we can, um, get those new trash receptacles. We haven't talked to, we have talked to a couple of other communities. I said it has helped a little with them. Um, I would just suggest at this point in time, rather than get into the nuts and bolts of this, that if you could, um, refer this to the finance committee, and we could have the individuals from MTG, our recycling, uh, company, come in, explain what they could do for us. Um, I think you may be, um, happy with their suggestion. And hopefully, some of you that wanted to see this happen, we could, we can foresee that.
Mayor, when is their contract up?
Their contract, uh, is up, Steve, don't hold me to this, I think, February? Don't hold me to that. I, I would, you know, I would check that out. Check that up. But that's part of it, an extension of the contract, uh, maybe, um, and there's also another community involved. So it's a situation where if they could put two communities together, you know, we could, um, realize the savings. So again, I'm sure they could, they'll come in and explain that, and I would just suggest that you defer this to the, uh, finance committee.
Counselor?
Thank you, uh, Council President. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all your effort. As you know, I've been honored from the very beginning, and thank you for your effort. I'd like to make a motion to send it to the finance committee.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, second by Councilman Brady. Any questions? Any being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Let me apologize. I gotta leave. Thanks.
Item number six, holiday sales license. Town council will consider a vote for the approval of a holiday sales license for Cumberland Farms, number twelve ninety-seven at ten forty-six Mineral Spring Avenue, North Province, Rhode Island. Do I have anyone here from Cumberland Farms?
Council, Council President, my name is Dave Valente. I'm a district manager for Cumberland Farms. And we are here, um, seeking, uh, approval for a holiday sales license. We feel by being open on the holidays, we'll be able to provide convenience for our first responders in town. They'll have a place to go during the holidays when other businesses might be closed. Um, also for doctors and nurses that have to work, you know, they have to also, if they wanna stop by, get a cup of coffee, something to eat, we'll be available for them.
Do I have any questions on the holiday sales license? So a motion approved?
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Juicy, second by Councilman Brady. Any further questions? Any being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number seven, twenty-four-hour license. Town council will consider a vote for the approval of a twenty-four-hour license for Cumberland Farms, number twelve ninety-seven at ten forty-six Mineral Spring Avenue, North Province, Rhode Island.
And, and for the same reasons, we would like to have a, a new store that's, uh, opening up in the end of this month. Uh, be open twenty-four hours, availability. And, um, I would also like, just like to, to say that for, um, security measures, we do have, uh, policies in place for being open at those times. We do have a self-contained safe that locks down, uh, before midnight, and, uh, nobody can access that safe until after four o'clock in the morning, not even the people that work there. We do have a no loitering policy. If anybody was to be hanging around, we would ask them to leave.
Mr. President?
I, I am in support of, uh, the twenty-four-hour license. I know several council people did have questions, especially those that represent the district and the town. So, Councilman Brady?
Uh, just one question, sir. I'm assuming that you have high-resolution cameras inside the store as well as in the parking lot?
We do, absolutely.
To be installed?
Yes, and they, they tape all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Valente?
Yes.
Thank you for coming to our town. Thank you for building and rehabbing that corner. We very much appreciate it.
We're very excited to be here.
I am happy that you are open in a business. I can't thank you enough. I'm gonna ask my colleagues if we can put the twenty-four-hour license on hold until the property is completed, and I'll explain why. When your company went through the planning and zoning process to build the facility and get the permitting and laid out the design, I had approached that same light that you're standing at and asked our zoning and planning boards how we were going to ensure that our commercial side of the business would be separate from the residents of Vincent Avenue. How are we, you know, I under, you know, I understand this very close together. They've been that way for a multitude of years. But how are we gonna ensure that the people who live on that back street don't have to stare at that such a large structure all day? So at that meeting, your company had agreed that not only would they put up fencing along Vincent Avenue, but they would also put abrevieties. So that way, over time, those abrevieties would grow, and it would kind of give those people on Vincent Avenue a shield from that property in front of them. So I'm gonna sit here tonight, and I'm gonna ask my colleagues if we can put this on hold. Um, I'm sure this council will entertain a special meeting in the event that one's needed. But I'm gonna ask that my colleagues stand with me on this and put this on hold until that landscaping is put in.
Are you, sir, are you concerned that the fence won't be put up, or that the bushes won't be planted?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that until that property is completed, I'd like to hold off on the twenty-four. I personally was. I'm, I'm only one of seven. But, um, I'm gonna ask that we hold off on the twenty-four-hour license.
Any questions, Mr. President?
I represent the district as well, along with, uh, Councilman Distefanis and Councilwoman Brady, who's at large, and she represents the whole town. I actually live in the neighborhood, um, only a few blocks down from there, and I think it, it looks great. You've been great neighbors so far. On your application, are you still on, on track to open for August twenty-second? Is that?
We are at, uh, August thirtieth.
August thirtieth?
Yes, we can push back a little bit.
Okay, so the next full council meeting is September fourth, if I'm correct. Uh, would the five-day delay adversely affect you that much? I mean, just to kind of appease some of the concerns of the council?
No, no.
Okay, if, if worse comes to worse, so we can call a special meeting before your opening, uh, just to make sure that everyone's comfortable that those concerns have been addressed.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, do you have a question? Yes, please come to the microphone.
Hi, my name's Kathy Iozzi. Is that twenty-four hours open? Is that every day or just for the holidays? The Cumberland Farm? Okay. I'm in the neighborhood also, and I don't think I like that idea, but I don't know if I, if we could have a vote on it, and for the residents.
We're not taking a vote.
We don't do that?
No, we're not taking a vote tonight.
Oh, okay. No, I mean, would the residents of the town, um, have the opportunity to know that this Cumberland Farms, that huge Cumberland Farms is gonna be open twenty-four hours?
Well, you can, well, you can turn on the record now, if you'd like, or we're gonna schedule it in a separate meeting for that.
Okay.
And, um, I could have.
I mean, I, I can't understand why a Cumberland Farms would be open for twenty-four hours, like, possibly, could you need?
With the town sergeant, we'll get to contacting when that meeting is.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I just have one other question.
Counselor?
Regarding the Cumberland Farms that descend of Mineral Spring Ave, is there any plans to do anything with that, expanding or anything?
What is on Mineral Spring Avenue?
The one that's near the McDonald's?
Yes. Uh, that's on hold right now. The, the company does wanna do something. They just basically haven't figured out what to do with it yet. The concern is there's not a lot of land there.
Sure.
So that's, that's why it's just been on hold.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to the September fourth council meeting, or if there was a special meeting beforehand.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Juicy, second by Councilman Distefanis. Any questions? Any being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number eight, vitruin license. Town council to consider approval of a vitruin license for PB Incorporated. EVA Masala Indian Cuisine at two thousand nine Smith Street, North Province, Rhode Island. Does anyone here from Masala Indian Cuisine? Is there anyone here from Masala Indian Cuisine? All right, can you just state your name for the record, sir?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm, uh, Masala Indian Cuisine.
Your name?
My name is Parat Kuralala.
Thank you.
I'm just, uh, opened a three-month ago. I'm just starting a small business.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, I, first time I'm involved in small business, but I'm learning to, how to do business in small. I'm learning to, if I have any confused, I'll tell like, uh, experienced guys will take our knowledge. I'll do that.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the vitruin license for Masala?
Yeah. I just have a quick question, sir. Thank you for coming before us. Uh, what hours and days will your restaurant be open?
Yeah, a little bit. Yeah, my-
Is it every, every day?
Yeah, we open, uh, six days. One day, Monday, we especially close.
Close Sunday?
No, Monday closes.
Monday?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I see. So you're open six days, and about what, uh, what time do you open in the morning? Or at noon? Do you open at noon?
Sorry?
Noon, you open in the afternoon?
Uh, yeah, we open.
And what time do you close?
Yeah, we close, uh, actually, uh, Sunday, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
Yeah, Sunday evening.
What about Friday and Saturday?
Yeah, Friday and Saturday, we open eleven-thirty to ten o'clock.
Seven o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, thank you for speak, uh, first time, yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, God bless the America.
Thank you for coming. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Brady, second by Councilman Brady. Any questions? Any being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number nine, vitruin license. Item number nine, vitruin license. Town council to consider approval of a vitruin license. Pizza Family Catanzaro Incorporated, D.B.A., Two Brothers Family Pizza, thirteen eighty-five Middle Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Does anyone have any, Two Brothers Family Pizza, Catanzaro? Can you state your name for the record again, mayor?
Ybba Bola.
Thank you.
Margarita Gallegos.
Thank you.
Jose David.
Aldo Albanesi.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Will you be running the same operation?
I'm just the interpreter, so I'm just gonna help them to, to translate. Do you guys have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions about Catanzaros?
Yeah, I'm very sorry.
Go ahead.
So are you the current owner and you're selling, selling to them? Okay, that's funny.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve the vitruin license?
So moved.
Second.
Been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Deola. Any further questions? Any non-holds in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number ten, expansion of liquor license. Outdoor dining premises at Camp Nowhere received a request from James Lepowski, owner of Camp Nowhere, for permission for expansion of liquor license dining premises at Camp Nowhere, eighteen thirty-eight Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island.
Council President?
Council?
State for the record that I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, I have a letter to read that I was handed at four o'clock. Have to read it to the record.
Okay.
President Orellano, reviewing the agenda item for the August seventh, two thousand eighteen council meeting. I noticed a request for expansion of the existing liquor license dining premise at Camp Nowhere, eighteen thirty-eight Smith Street. I heard today the applicant is considering expanding the serving of food and liquor to the building next door, eighteen forty-eight Smith Street. These building, buildings are not connected and have totally different addresses. I am respectfully requesting the town council to hold this for further study until a full plan of action is submitted to building, planning, and fire departments for compliance with respective codes. At that time, with informed knowledge, we can advise the council on our findings. I apologize for not being in attendance, but I have a prior commitment. Regards, Captain John P. Horn.
Okay.
Fortunately, this was handed to us at four o'clock.
That's fine.
I actually want you guys to address.
No problem. James Jankowski, Camp Nowhere.
Ezra Spitzer Williams, Camp Nowhere.
Thank you.
So the kind, the plan that we're bringing before you guys tonight has nothing to do with eighteen forty-eight Smith Street, which was, I guess, what was cited in that letter. So eighteen forty-eight Smith Street, we took over and we are renting and using it as office space, and it will never be used as revenue-generating space for Camp Nowhere ever. We've already talked to you guys about that. And like was, that was stated in that letter, the fire systems, I guess, being in two separate addresses, we wouldn't be able to merge those, so that is not gonna happen. Basically, who we're asking for is there is a twenty-two-foot space in between eighteen thirty-eight and eighteen forty-eight Smith Street. And I rent both of them. One, one side is an office. And right now, it's just basically two parking spots, and it's kinda like an eyesore. I don't feel comfortable with the customers that do have to come out the side door to leave in the way that it looks and stuff. We'd kinda like to do our own little beautification project on the side, add some crushed stone, some bollards maybe, so that cars can't go through. And cornhole lanes, cornholes basically, it's horseshoes, but with beanbags, a little bit safer. And people like the, the outdoor community-style games, and I think it would be a good addition for the customers. It's basically, our patio has been a pretty outstanding success, I would say, in the front. It's just five more feet to the side. We're not looking to add more seating. We're looking to have just a little outdoor area possibly, so people can smoke on the side instead of in the front where everybody's eating the food. So that's kinda what we're asking for. Definitely not adding a liquor license to eighteen forty-eight in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Any, any questions, Camp Nowhere? Chief, did you wanna add?
Chief Silver, North Providence Fire Department. I'm just speaking on behalf of Captain Horan. I was gonna be here tonight. I told him I'd address it. Our only concern is the fire code being a separate building. And I'm sure if you're gonna put an extension, you're gonna have to go to a building permit, which is gonna be.
So we're not connected, we're not using? This is just the outdoor.
This is just, I'm just talking about the two parking spots.
Oh, so this is strictly outside?
Strictly outside, naturally.
Then it, that, if it's strictly outside, it has nothing to do with the fire department, so.
Strictly outside.
Our concern is the state, according to the state and federal fire codes, we can't have two separate addresses with the same. So if that's the case, then we, we could bow out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I think the question, uh, chief, I think the question is, well, you guys as well. I think the question is proper egress for the rest of the businesses that are next to Camp Nowhere. In between the two, there is a space that cars go around to park the Sorentos, to park the bagel shop, to park the printer in the back. There, I think, is the question that lies, is if they wanna use that, if they're gonna put up any kind of blockade.
So if I can address?
Yeah, let me, let me finish, you can't sure. If they're gonna put a blockade and cars cannot get through, I think that's a question on egress.
Yeah, and I thi, I think that's, I, I believe that's handled through the town ordinances. So, I mean, my recommendation would be to put this off to, for the ordinance committee, so they could determine whether it can be done or not. I mean, I can't, the building official would have to give you that.
Right.
The lines of demarcation. As far as egress, we egress from the building, not from the outside of the building, so we don't have any state fire code that would cover that. So it would be expand from our jurisdiction. It would be like putting a smoking area outside of a building, correct?
Yeah, pretty much.
Would you like to keep it a walking throughway, but it obviously would be safe to have our customers there without bollards in case a car? Just like we have in the back.
I mean, I would welcome, uh, uh, have my fire marshal, our fire marshal go out there and review it to give you the proper lines. I mean, it, it's new to us. This just came up to me at four o'clock like it did yourself, so I apologize for that.
That's okay.
But, but we have no problem coming out there and helping you. I, I just, the original concern was the separate buildings, 'cause we have other buildings in North Providence, which we had problems with. Uh, expanding to emergencies, and we got in a little heat with the, the fire marshal's office, the state fire marshal. So that was our main concern, but we're willing to help any way we all need help, whether it be to accomplish ourselves.
So when we were originally trying to add the other building as additional space, we met with the building department and the fire department, and they were okay with us at, using that. And we, that was gonna be blocked off, pretty much the same way we're gonna do now, except we're gonna put a door to entrance to that building. So they've, we've already spoken about it with them regarding the previous plans. We're just not adding the other building because.
Ezra, are you, you planning on putting any kind of blockade in between, like poles, cement walls?
So, so the same as.
Are you gonna expand your front to the end?
No, our front's gonna stay separate, and then where the front, if you can imagine where the front of the plaza is, is where there will be two, uh, half-walls that come out. Yeah, bollards i- inside the half-walls, just like we did the patio.
Right.
Um, and then there'll be, I think it's three feet.
So then, once you, once you put them up, there is no getting by there?
Not with the car, no.
Not with the, you can't get by.
Correct.
You can easily walk through.
You can walk through, but not with a car. Well, that's.
I know walking through, but you cannot drive through.
Correct.
Why don't, you said you were gonna use this for smoking area and?
Well, so we, we, uh, we, we have these games like outdoor, uh, it's like life-size Jenga. And then we have, um, cornhole, which is like beanbag toss.
Why don't you, why don't you just, why don't you put it in the back of the boat?
That, that's parking there, and it wouldn't be easier for our customers.
Yeah, but at least you wouldn't.
I don't think safe to get.
Yeah, but at least you wouldn't be blocking that entrance for, for the rest of the businesses, the, the restaurant over there, and all the other businesses, the printers, the, uh, the bagel plates, Sorentos Restaurant. You wouldn't be blocking that alleyway for their, for their customers to drive through and go around.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm there pretty much every day, and I, that's where I park, so cars don't really, since we've been open, haven't really been driving through anyway.
I'm not sure else, because it's an alley, but it's an alley.
It, so it's, it's, it's two parking spaces. So we have the same landlord, both the plaza and our building. It's Steve Campo, and we did research before we approached this the previous time, and it's two parking spaces.
All right, so. Mr. President, can I ask some questions here?
One second. We're gonna, um, I'll entertain more questions, but I think there's too many moving parts right now, um, obviously with this letter. And we're not gonna be having a special meeting before the next meeting, so we'll just continue this item to that. Till, uh, till that meeting is, is determined. Councilman, did you wanna?
Yeah, I just, um, so you guys came here. Thank you for opening up in this town. Thank you for the wonderful job you've done on the building. You came back, you asked for a patio.
Yep.
And the patio, when you came here last, was, you know, so your customers can frequent outside, you know, you can expand your tables. How, how are you, if I'm on that patio?
Yep.
Okay, and I wanna drink. Can I grab it on that patio, or do I have to go in the building?
So typically, you have to go in the building. We have, um, an outdoor draft unit that we're gonna use for the weekends, for Friday and Saturday night. Just for a, a beer, if, if you want.
Okay, and so now you're asking to take the square footage to the right?
Yes.
So now you can create a game area there?
Correct. So customers will be able to walk out of our side door and be able to play those games without being in the street.
If I'm correct, and I know that we're gonna meet on this at a special meeting, I wasn't, when you asked for the outdoor dining.
Yeah.
It was to serve the customers, not to dispense to the customers.
Okay.
So, so let's say at this special meeting, we grant you the ability for these games. Are you gonna install an outdoor beer pump in that area also?
No.
Okay. 'Cause I don't, I don't ever recall the outdoor beer pump being part of the conversation when you came here the last time for approval.
It's, it's, it's my understanding that because we are allowed to serve drinks outside, that there's no difference between having a draft system inside or outside. I mean, it's a portable draft unit that the liquor distributors gave us. They give them out to hundreds of accounts throughout the state.
But I, I just, but I don't, but I don't know of anybody in the town dispensing outside. That, that's the point that I'm, and it's nothing really against you two. I'm just saying, you know, we now have a business dispensing. You know, is the next business gonna figure that out? They're gonna start dispensing. And then now, all of a sudden, we're gonna have everyone dispensing beer outdoors when this council doesn't approve that. Why, I, since I've been on it, we haven't approved it.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know.
And to be honest, I voted in favor of the, you know, wasn't crazy about it, not my district. But I wasn't aware that there would be a, an actual dispensing unit, whether that's a, a, a pump, you know, dispensing beer or a bartender behind, you know, a table. I wasn't, I was under the assumption that the outdoor dining, um, like Lewis Quizit has, that like Mozzarella's had, you had to go into the place or, or garner that choice from the menu off the waitress.
Yeah, I don't know the exact nacelle of the law. I, I definitely did not think that, um, we were trying to be disingenuous at all or anything like that.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, since you're back here.
From a perspective, I don't, I don't see a difference where the drink is, is being prepared. I just thought it was a, a nice amenity to customers to possibly, um.
Give better customer service.
Yeah, just, we'd just, we'd just take advantage of that, and if it was something that we're doing improperly, we could absolutely move. Like I said, it's the, it's not my unit, it's the, uh, your company's, so we could definitely explore that.
I mean, it wasn't our plan when we first envisioned the patio to do this. It's just, I mean, we've been very successful, fortunately, and we have great customers, you know, that come from North Providence and surrounding areas, and it's, it was part of kind of the demand of people needing a drink faster or, you know, to.
Let's focus on the issue on the agenda note at hand. Councilman, do you wanna send that to the audience?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to send it to the audience, please.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Deoloso, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any further questions? Any non-holds in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. We'll be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Item number eleven, private detective license. Town council to consider approval of a reusable private detective license from Michael Caswell, our forty-six Sherwood Avenue, North Providence. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Caswell?
I have a question.
Councilman?
Mr. Caswell, are you bonded?
I have it right here.
And how much is the bond?
Excuse me?
How much are you bonded for?
As required by law, five thousand.
That's all I need to know.
Okay, our motion approved.
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? Any non, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. No, that's yours.
Item number twelve, trash and debris. Now, Nathan Colwell, request to appear before the council on the issue of trash and debris in the Nurturin Nook Learning Center at nine George Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. Mr. Colwell there, here. Mr. Colwell there. Okay, does the motion remove the citation from the agenda?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? Any non-holds in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirteen, breeding animals. Michael Conavalli, minimum housing officer, and Ernie Calandra, animal control officer, to appear at the request of the town council regarding the issue of resident, of resident that is breeding animals for profit. The item was continued from the June two thousand eighteen meeting.
Good evening, Council President.
Just state your name for the record.
Mike Conavalli, building inspector, town, North Providence.
Ernest Calandra, North Providence, the animal control officer.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Does anybody have any questions on the property that we've discussed a couple times?
Mr. President?
Councilman?
Uh, I, I think first and foremost, just looking for a status update as to what's going on with the, there's more than one type of animal there. There's been allegations of dogs, rabbits, and now apparently there's pigs as well. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but I think we're just certainly looking to see what's been done and, and how we go moving forward.
Well, we started on, um, Oc- October of two thousand seventeen. First letter went out because we got a complaint that he was raising rabbits for profit. He didn't respond to the first letter. The second letter went out on eleven fourteen seventeen. Finally, we got him into court in front of Judge Lombardi in the, uh, uh, January. And because the homeowner didn't respond to the complaint, it got postponed until June. Once we went back in June, we got a warrant in order to go onto the property to make sure that everything was cleaned. And he was warned. We gave him fourteen days. We honored the warrant. Ernie and myself went in with a North Providence police officer as a witness. Everything was clean, the rabbits were gone, and then Ernie checked with the dogs.
Correct. The, um, on that day that we served, he executed the warrant, Mr. Mendonka had, I'm sorry, can you? Mr. Mendonka had two, um, rottweilers, and he had, also he had a rottweiler puppy outside. Um, when he led us on the property, I asked him to, um, pr- provide proof of the licenses on the dogs. He said that he had licensed them last November, and I have that. And he said that he was unaware that he had to license them every April. He thought they were good for one year, according to when he licensed them the previous year. I gave Mr. Mendonka a timeframe of one week. He, um, did license, and I, I did follow up with that. He did license his dogs. And I have copies of the three licensed. There are three adult dogs on the property. Also, Mr. Mendonka has, um, in the past, and, um, as far as I know, he's, he is a hobby breeder. I have a copy of the, of the laws, if you would like to see it. As far as hobby breeding goes, it is, um, it's under, it's chapter four nineteen, uh, under the animal, animal husbandry. And, um, it is, it states that if you are a hobby breeder, you have, um, you have the ability to, in one single calendar year, have up to three litters or twenty puppies at your residence. Now, in, in the ordinance of the town in North Providence, once the puppies reach six months of age, they're not allowed to be there. You can only have three adults. So as soon as those puppies turn six months of age, you're only, he's only allowed to have three adults on the property. And I, I've explained this to him in the past, so, um, Mr. Mendonka also, um, did receive a summons. There was an incident, the last incident that I was aware, that I'm aware of, was on, uh, June thirtieth for his, um, dogs being loose. I have a report, I have a report and a witness statement from a neighbor at twenty Pyatt Street. Uh, she also provided some video footage of the dog being loose. Based on that evidence, I did issue. Uh, she also provided some video footage of the dog being loose, and based on that evidence, I did issue him a summons, and, and as far as I know, um, Mr. Mendonka was here last night at municipal court, and he did appear in municipal court last night, I checked with the, um, the clerk today.
Just, just to let, uh, everyone on the council know, it's not been pleasant for the neighbors that lived around twenty-two Piap. This gentleman pushed and pushed to the limit, used every opportunity for, you know, to mislead us on what he was doing, that's how we got the warrant. But when I couldn't get Mr. Kuchenkoff in front of the judge, 'cause he never would appear, and according to Mr. Mendonka, he was out of the country. Police department tried to check the status of the passport, couldn't find any information on that, kept going back to the house numerous times, and the neighbors tried to help us to let us know, we saw him last weekend, we saw him this weekend, but fortunately, I just can't call the North Providence police officer and say, hey, head out to twenty-two Piap, we're gonna grab the guy that's raising rabbits while they're chasing criminals. So, I couldn't, I couldn't execute it as fast as I wanted to, so what we did is we sat down with the Colonel and the Chief of Police, and now we have a three-week system, they serve you with a ticket, you get it in front of the judge within the next two weeks, so it doesn't take a ninety-day process anymore. It takes anywhere from three to five weeks to go in front of the judge. And I'm showing no mercy at this, at this point, 'cause I don't want the neighbors like on Piap Street, Top Hill, all around there to have to go through, any other neighborhood to go through what these people went through. They had legitimate complaints, and I just didn't have the resource and the time with the courts to want to get it in faster.
Thank you very much, that's actually an excellent system, thank you for the place, I think everyone up here appreciates your efforts.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you very much.
What about the pigs, are there any pigs?
I do have, um, a packet for each, each of you, if you'd like, yeah, I, I don't know if it would help you, um, with the reports.
Are there any pigs on the property, Mike?
What's that?
Are there any pigs on the property?
No, the, the, the last time we went was, uh, June twenty-seventh, I took all photographs, he cleaned everything, he took all the rabbit cages and put them underneath his deck, and he cleaned up the property, and the shed we checked, and the container we checked, as they said, he was hiding there. The only place we didn't check is the basement of the house, and the dogs were running around there, so the way they were barking, I don't think any rabbits would survive.
Mr. President.
Councilman?
The hobby law, is that a town ordinance or is that a state law?
State law.
State law.
It's under chapter, um, four nineteen, under title four, animal and animal husbandry.
Thank you.
There's a copy in, in the, um, in the packet.
Will you step aside for one second?
Uh, Jennifer Morgan, I live on Top Hill, um, when I was here in June, my question was, was he actually a hobby breeder or was he doing that for a living? Um, I presented to you a name of a business that he had, and he was also selling the dogs in front of his house, I think I provided you with photos of that. So, that's the question there, because he's already had several litters, so if he's supposed to be licensed for this, not a hobby breeder, how long is this gonna continue?
If he's, uh, just let me explain, the hobby breeder allows him to have the twenty puppies per year, per calendar year, and, or, or three litters, whichever is greater. As far as, to best of my knowledge, that he has had puppies in this calendar year, he's, he's, one of his females has had, I believe, between eight, eight to ten puppies this calendar year. And to, to go to the end of December, if he's, if, and we rely on, obviously, any, any neighbors to, you know, let us know if, if there are more puppies or if there's any complaints, we're out there for that, we'll check on the puppies, but if, if he stays within the twenty puppies, he's not, he, he falls under the hobby breeding, um, statute, and he's, he's exempt from, from any penalty or violation, in other words, he doesn't have to get a license as a breeder. He's, if he's selling them at retail, if he's selling them and there's no middleman, if he's selling them at retail, if he's selling them at retail, he's considered under the state law, as long as he's not selling more than twenty, and as long as they're not, and as long as they don't stay on the property, more than three adults, which at age six months in this town is considered an adult, then he's exempt.
Just to let the council know, I'm gonna step aside, just to let the council know, we need that information, I need probably, well, any violations that go on, I, um, I take care of the fall, I mean, take care of what we handle, I take care of all the violations, I'd be really glad to come here and explain myself anytime, where I'm at, what I was looking for, just where I'm at.
I have a question for Ernie.
Yes.
You were explaining about the hobby breeding and the amount of litters they can add, is something, is this state law or is this town, town ordinance, is this something that we could possibly?
This is state.
State, okay, state.
However, if the town was, was the passage ordinance of its own, um, it would, it would, it would supersede, it would supersede this. The town ordinance could supersede anything, um, that is, is under this provision, right now, I don't have that, you know.
You're saying the town ordinance could supersede the state ordinance?
That's something I think maybe we could possibly do.
Mr. President.
How do you know the difference between a hobby breeder and a business anyways? I mean, if this gentleman doesn't work, he's home all day long, and people are coming all day long, to me, that seems like a business, as well as a website posting his puppies and his, his rabbits, that's more of a business than a hobby.
That's why I'm trying to see if we could change the ordinance, and then, then we give them more teeth when they go out to, to force.
I have had other complaints, um, from, um, from other neighbors also on this matter, uh...
Right.
As far as the dogs being, um, out and, and loose, and then also I explained, uh, to Mr. Morgan, there's a, uh, so I do say this statement, the ordinance is a town. If there is, uh, we need three, uh, people, separate residents, to firm a writing to, to my office, uh, of any who store or, or, whatever claim may be. Um, Mrs. Morgan did fill one out, and also I have a, uh, another neighbor that, uh, well, I, I needed that third, I do need a third one. So I, I explained to Mr. Morgan if there was any other neighbors, we could, yeah.
Mr. President, may I say something?
I just wanna ask a question with that, um, after we had filled out that paper, there was an incident where the dogs were once again in his yard. His wife had called the police, and it was about an hour until Sue came out, she drove by the house and she took off. So she called again, and she demanded for somebody to come back out, Sue came back out and refused to fill out a report. And she told her, I am telling you that I want a report right now, and Sue said to her, well, you do realize it has to be from three different addresses. It shouldn't matter if you have one complaint, two complaints, three complaints from the same address, you should still fill out a report, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And there was a report filled out, I have that.
After she demanded it, and she had to call twice for her to come out there.
And I also have, um, a witness in front, I believe, she was, uh, kept in court, and that, and, and they were the ones that provided me, um, photos and video of us, of dogs being loose. On that, I issued, I issued, um, just a town summons, part of the training that I, you know, that you sustain, okay.
The only reason that I say that is because Ernie's been very helpful, but I think I mentioned before that there were issues with Sue and, um, her responding to, to situations, um, regarding this, and I also like to, no, he is, he's awesome, I have no problem with Ernie, and I have no problem with Mr. Conavalli. Um, I'd like to, I know Mr. Kenny Amorigi mentioned the pigs. When I was here in November, I told you that there was another neighbor who we were told had pigs along with six dogs, they live at twenty-four Benedict Street. On July twenty-seventh, it was a Friday, I went out to my car to get something, and I heard this loud squealing, and I'm looking all around, trying to figure out where it was, and when I made it aware that they had pigs, I was assuming they were teacup pigs. Well, finally, the pig came out because he was trying to run down the street, and this pig weighs about four hundred pounds. And when I called the police, he laughed at me, and he asked if I lived on Wenaska Tucket, and I said, no, why? And a week before my call, there was a loose pig over by Wenaska Tucket. So when the police officer actually came and went to the premises, there are two large farm-sized pigs that we could feed everybody in this room with, that are living outside along with six dogs, and I know in the town, there's only three dogs allowed. So we all know, as residents here, there's rat issues, so you've got these pigs living outside, and six dogs, and feces, and food, rabbits behind us that had already caused a problem with the rats, we've got bigger problems.
So what we'll do is, Ernie, I think we need to have, Councilman Juicy's the chair of the ordinance committee, I think, you know, we'll have one before the next council meeting, which is coming up fast. We'll invite you in, absolutely, make some suggestions how we can change all these ordinances, so, absolutely.
Yeah, have, have with you when you come, Ernie.
I'm sorry?
When you come to the meeting, the ordinance committee meeting, have any kind of changes you want to the ordinance, so that makes it easy for you guys to, to, you know, go after these people and force, and force, so these people don't have to suffer like that.
I just wanna say, I was unaware of, of everything.
He appa- he apparently told the police, 'cause when the, when the police officer came out of the yard, he was just shaking his head.
So twenty-four Benedict?
Twenty-four Benedict, and he, the owner said that, he claimed, when he bought, purchased these pigs, that they were teacup pigs. But once that pig reached fifty pounds, I would think that any normal person would say, this is not a teacup pig. And he just continued to let, I mean, they were living in his house, they're living in the yard, like, how do you live, they were disgusting. And I, when I saw this thing, I was just like, oh, oh my god. Well, I was here in November, and I was told by a neighbor, I didn't know, I kept smelling something, and the neigh, the woman who lived next door told me, she can't sit in her yard because the pig urine is so strong, so that was the smell that I was getting, so that's, when I came in here in November, I brought this up. And somebody may also wanna check out Hopson Ave, there are chickens that roam freely all day, and I know those also, I mean, this town's becoming a farm. There's just...
Thank you for the information.
Yes, I have a friend that lives there, and she posted pictures of these chickens that just walk around all day.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Make a motion, we send this to you.
Wait, wait, can I say something?
Ask for it.
Yeah, can we send a letter, I make a motion to send a letter to, uh, the town solicitor, asking him to review the state law four dash twenty-five? Because in the state law, it sa- it states that the whole, the method of a hobby breeder is to sell at retail only. So, I doubt this individual selling at retail, and does he have a license to sell at retail? And then also, is, is where this property is located, is he zoned to be an operator?
No.
So then, why don't we send a letter to, uh, the town solicitor, asking him to look at both of those, and then he could give an opinion to the officer and Mr. Conavalli while you're changing the ordinance.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Stefan, a second by Councilman Amorigi, any questions?
Could I, I just wanna make a comment, we actually, Ray, uh, we did ask for that previously, and we, we didn't receive a response, but thank you for making the motion.
So can we put a timetable on it, that we want it back in two weeks?
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Stefan, a second by Councilman Amorigi, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, Councilman Juicy's gonna make a motion to send this to the ordinance committee for review of the ordinances discussed.
Second.
Second by Councilman DiLorenzo, any questions? Maybe none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Conavalli.
Okay, item number fourteen, litter issue, receives a request from Kathleen Iosa to appear before the council to discuss the issue of the litter in the street in the area of Cooper and Bassett Street, is that okay?
Thank you.
That was a hard act to follow.
Try it.
Yeah, um, members of the council, like, come before you with concerns on the litter that's, um, in North Providence. Um, it's not only on my street, but Maryville seems to be, um, the worst. Um, there's, um, bottles, straws, cups, uh, little nips, um, it's becoming very cluttered and very, um, hard to look at. I go for walks in the morning, and that's all I see on the streets is, is litter. I took pictures of what I see in the morning when I walk, I don't know if anybody wants to see them, but it's a buildup of, it's a buildup of, of debris. I don't know if we can get, um, maybe a committee together as a coon up crew for our town. Um, I don't know what happened to, um, uh, street sweepers, I haven't seen a street sweeper in two years, and that's the results of not having a street sweeper. There's grass growing in a, in a, uh, sidewalks that haven't been trimmed or cut, and people are just throwing trash in areas of, of that particular, um, areas. I mean, I teach my kids never to litter, teach my grandchildren never to litter, and unfortunately, this next generation is, is just not following our path. So, I don't know what we can do about it, this is the second time I've come to a council meeting for the litter in North Providence. It's, um, kind of monotonous, I don't like to be here talking about this, I lived in this town for forty years, and I've noticed a big change in a year and a half with our streets, they're a mess. And we're having new buildings coming into our town, which, um, you know, flat for, but it's gonna, I think it's only gonna bring in more litter if we don't get control of this now. Um, I don't know what to do, I, it's just an eyesore for me as a, um, a resident of North Providence. I'm, I'm just like embarrassed of the town. When I have company sometimes, I have to go down the street with a bag and pick up litter, so my company can come to my street without seeing that. I mean, I, um, I don't know, I don't know what to do, I, that's why I'm coming before the, the council.
Does anybody have any questions for, for Sylva?
Mr. President, I'll gladly jump in, so sorry that, every morning that that's something you have to see. Um, we here on this council, year after year, have budgeted funds for street sweeping, um, but we're not the individuals who would run the street sweeping program, that would be the administration. Um, but what I will do is, I will make a motion tonight to send a letter to the administration, asking them to take a look at Cooper, Bassett, Remington, um, and that surrounding area, and ask them to pick the litter up, sweep the streets. Um, that's about all we could do.
Even like in the Walgreens, like, when I walk into the Walgreens on the corner of Charles and Menlo Spig Avenue, I mean, it's just, it's, I'm like, what town am I in? You know, so...
Yeah.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Stefan, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Second by Councilman Brady, any questions? Maybe none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
Councilman, actually, uh, Mr. President, they've, there's, she, um, Kathy actually reached out to me, we previously worked together on the issue of the, the lot behind Maryville School, and, and encouraged the administration to, to make sure that it was maintained. A couple of the things that we had thought of, and she mentioned Walgreens, I'd also like to make a motion, um, to send a letter to Walgreens, asking that they monitor and patrol their, uh, parking lot for debris and other, uh, loose trash.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Amorigi to send a letter to Walgreens, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stefan, is any questions? Maybe you're none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make one more motion, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So the other thing that we had discussed, which I think is maybe a worthwhile endeavor, is, I, I wanna make a motion, uh, we have, we have an unlimited resource in town, obviously, this, as mentioned earlier by the mayor, there's a, there's a growing youth population, and there's plenty of youths, uh, now they're required to do community service. So I wanted to make a motion to send a letter to the North Providence High School administration, um, and advise them that if there are any students who either need to or want to fulfill community service hours, that they contact the town clerk's office, and she can direct them to the council people of District Two as well as at large, to try to coordinate some, uh, trash pickups.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Amorigi, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Brady, any questions? Maybe you're none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hi, Deborah Carroll. I came with my neighbor today about, to support her, and we just bought a house there, in that neighborhood. And I, I can't get over it, the flood, the, the water just floods on the corner of Cooper and Bassett, because there's no drainage. It's totally clogged, because of all the debris. I question now, it's like, when we don't see improvement, I'm like, why would we have purchased a home there? And that's sad, because it's a great, it's close to the highways, it's easily accessible, but, it's very discouraging. I mean, I found, I walked myself, and I found a hypodermic needle on the, on the ground. I mean, that's pretty bad. So, it's not even safe to pick up, I wouldn't even pick up debris around there. And it's a lot. We've got the, the, what do they call that? The, the Legion, or, what is that called?
Knights of Columbus.
I'm sorry?
Knights of Columbus.
Yeah, and it, and you know, and the same, people are going to drink and everything, but, man, they, we found bottles of, empty bottles of liquor, like, nips, like, in the yard, throwing it in, I mean, it's unbelievable. And then Cooper is a cut-through street.
Correct.
So, people don't care, they just don't live there. They just use it as a cut-through, because they don't want to go around the thing. And, and these people that go by, I mean, they're going by, like, if I could get a penny for every car that goes by, we'd be all set. And they, you know, people just leave their trash, they throw it out. And it's all the neighbors on that street. I wish something could be done about that, having that not be a cut-through, because it's, and then now, with the Cumberland Farms and the other donut shop that's going up, it's going to be worse. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number fifteen. Centennial area clearing sidewalks of overgrown brush. See request from Ruth Bucci will have discuss the following items. A, making Centennial business area more walkable, accessible, safer to more attractive residents, visitors and commerce. B, making sidewalks clear of overgrown bushes, particularly along Smith Street between Turcone Street and Helen Street. Making the intersection of Humbert Street and Fruit Hill Avenue safer by cleaning off the offshoots on the tree which blocks vision of oncoming cars.
Hello, hello, President and council members. My name is Ruth Bucci, and I've just given you each a four-page, a little, a little packet there, I, which, which has the Centennial History Walk, the, the flyer that went out last year, it shows Centennial in a map of, this map is from eighteen ninety-five, but, you know, that was the basic route. And then the second page is a hand-drawn map that shows the twenty-three stops on the Centennial History Walk, starting at the Town Hall, near Stair Avenue, if you can see it, and then going down, as you can see, it goes through, goes to, to, down when Oscar Tuckett, up George, along Smith Street, back past the, past the Town Hall, to the bridge, Centennial Bridge, and then up the bypass a little bit, to Waterman Avenue, and then back, back down Waterman Avenue to Smith Street, and returning to the Town Hall. So, that's the route that the Centennial History Walk followed. On one of the history walks, the AARP did a walk, a walk audit, and they submitted, they prepared a report, and I have given the clerk the entire report, and, and as you, I mailed it to you, President, last year, when it was, well, in October, when it came out, and the mayor and other officials of the town. But, I wanted to point out a few things that were said from the, from the Centennial History Walk, street audit by AARP. And, in general, there were, and you can take a walk along the streets that I've just shown you, and you'll see more or less the same thing. The streets have cracks, the sidewalks have cracks, they are uneven, they are, they are a little hazardous to walk on. If you look at the, the trees that are in Centennial, if you look at the bottom, the surrounding areas, they are many times litter, all around the trees, the edging is not kept up, it's kind of falling apart. There aren't flowers around the trees. If you walk down, as you walk down when Oscar Tuckett, no trees at all, on the beautiful new paving that they did, and with the sidewalks, no, no trees planted there. And then when you come up George Street, the sidewalk's nice, but when you get up toward Smith Street, that's just a parking lot. So, if you were planning to be on a sidewalk, it, it ends, because it's a business. But, that was some of the comments there. As far as crosswalks go, I mean, you can follow, well, not to, not to change the subject, but, if you come around the whole route that I just laid out for you, you'll see more or less the same things, the cracks, the litter, in the gutter, on the sidewalks, difficulty crossing, because there are few cross signals. I had to plan that route very carefully, to have it be the safest route possible, and still, we did have a police escort, and I did get the orange vest. The sidewalks are faded somewhat, there are cracks in them. When you, when you crossed by the St. Albans, and you cross near the bypass, and you have to walk across the street to where the old Citizens was, where the dog, dog vet, the vet is now, some cracks and, and holes that you're going to be ca, have to be careful of. As you walk down, past the Town Hall, same thing, when you get down toward Cumberland Farms, then it's really kind of dangerous with all of the different driveways. That, that was very, very hard to cross for us, because it's in, there are so many, like I said, so many driveways. And then when you get down to the, the bridge, and we did cross the street, all there is is to go near the old Mason Building. All that there is, is a faded sidewalk, there's no pedestrian signage, pedestrian button or anything like that to help you cross. And then if you go up, up, up the bypass to, to Waterman Avenue, and then you come back and you have to cross Waterman Avenue, very dangerous. I did it the other day, just to see if anything had changed, and apparently, it's an automatic signal now. But, so I was able to cross, and then, when you get to Mineral Spring Avenue, the edge of Mineral Spring Avenue and Smith Street, there's no signal whatsoever. No crosswalk, there's, there's nothing to help you with the traffic that's turning on to Mineral Spring Avenue. So, you just have to take your chances if you want to, I mean, you have to look carefully, I don't mean to say take your chances, but, there is no pedestrian assistance to cross Mineral Spring Avenue at the edge of Smith Street. There isn't. And so, when I did the walk, when I stopped at where the old Bonacorces was, where the salon was, right at the corner of Mineral Spring and, and Smith, and you look down toward Robbins Funeral Parlor, I would have liked to go down to the Old Town Hall, but there was no way I could, I didn't feel comfortable crossing the bypass with, with the group. And if I had decided to cross, I would have had to cross over on, at the bottom on Smith Street, and then come up Mineral Spring, because there's no way to cross on the left side of the bypass. You have to cross down on Minerals, down on Smith Street and go up, in order to have...
I'm trying to picture this all in my head, as you're explaining it to yourself.
What's that?
I'm trying to picture this all in my head.
Yeah, well, that's why I gave you the map. Because I said, if I tried to explain any of this without at least giving you a map to look at, and to, to understand, and it's kind of hard, if you took a walk, you'll see exactly what I'm, what I'm talking about. Centennial, okay, so let, let's get back to the good points, okay? The good point is our deep history. And people love the history walk, no matter that, yeah, it was a little diff, it was difficult of walking, it would have been very hard if, if there had been people with wheelchairs, because, as the AARP mentions, accessibility is, is an issue on the walk. But, the people still loved seeing all our history and doing the walk, and the, the things that I'm mentioning were, were put aside. And we, we enjoyed that walk, I mean, I did, and I had so many good comments. So, it's just that, I'm, I'm here on, on Centennial, because it's a beautiful place, it, it needs to be improved. If we can have the litter cleaned, the trash cans cleaned, picked up, I know it's state roads, and I know there might be a, a grant coming in, and maybe some of that can be used to make it more, more beautiful. And I've talked to people in the area, businesses, the pool place, and if you had the hanging baskets, flower baskets, that would make it prettier, and the AARP mentioned that too. Having nice flower baskets, that would be pretty, make people, you know, want to come more. Okay, a final thing is on, on Centennial was, all the empty storefronts, maybe you could have some kind of pop-up business, pop-up activities go on, and, and some of them, maybe, I, I, you know, they suggest, they make some suggestions of different businesses, or museums, or use it for a senior project presentation, or storytelling, or, or use Centennial in, in more creative ways. The storefronts, and maybe you could have, they call them little pocklets created in Centennial, where you use, say, two or three parking spaces, and you put trees, and, and in the, in the full report, there's a picture of pocklets, okay? And people can have, eat outside, and, and have a lot of greenery. So, the lack of greenery was a, a major issue in Centennial, as well as the other things I mentioned. But, the great potential of Centennial is also mentioned, and how much the people love, love our history, and, and still love Centennial, even, even though it, 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 we're looking to the future in Centennial. So, that's Centennial. So, I don't know what the, what the council can do, but I wanted to present some ideas, and, and people want to walk to Centennial, and be in Centennial, not just drive through it. It, it can be a destination. It was, as you can, you know, as many of you know, it was a destination, a big destination. It was a, a big stopping route, where you had, you know, where, where the pool hall is now, you had a, a big hotel that had ten fireplaces, and everybody stopped there on the way out to Situate. So, we, we've got a big history, and, and I'd like to see us take some steps toward making it more beautiful in Centennial, and more attractive, and good, better for business. So, that's Centennial.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, there's two other things. Okay, in my walking as campaigning, I, I talked to a lot of residents, and one man is sight impaired, and he lives up, up near Palom, Palom Street, off Smith Street, so, this is my second topic, okay? And he, he asked me to, to mention, maybe, if you can make sure that the bushes are, are trimmed, so that he does not have to walk out in, on Smith Street, because his guide dog takes him right out into Smith Street, because the sidewalk is so overgrown, the hedges from the yards are overgrown, so his guide dog takes him out into the, out into the Route Forty-four. So, I said, well, you know, I'll mention it, and I hope that the, the town can take care of that and help him. He's, you know, I can give you his name after, and, and you probably know, you know, you probably know who I'm talking about. So, hopefully, we can help our sight impaired people. So, that's the second topic, in the...
Councilman Lorenzo has a question.
Yes.
What is the exact address of that property?
It's Palom, I think it's Twenty-eight, Twenty-eight Palom, but it, that's where he lives, but you mean the property of the overgrown, overgrown bushes?
Right.
Between Turcone and, between Turcone Street and Palom Street. If you look at that area, you'll see it, right across from Evans Field. So, the bushes, they're not that, that bad right now. I walked it, but, I guess from, sometimes they get bad enough where he's outside, out in, out in Forty-four.
Thank you, I run up that hill, and I have to top on them.
Okay. And also, the tree, I noticed the tree would have to be limbed up a little bit. Okay, so that, thank you. And then the third thing is, one of the residents, and I notice it, because I live in, in town, and this, I just want to mention one particular bush, it's really a tree. It's at the top of Humbert, and, and the intersects Fruit Hill. And so, when you, it was planted as a tree, but it, it has not been, it's on town property, I believe, and it has not been, you have all the offshoots, so it has not been trimmed. And it's like a, a bush, and so you cannot see oncoming traffic very well. It's in real hazard, so, that needs to be trimmed. These, all of these three things, Centennial, Smith Street, the bushes, and then at the top of Humbert, I mentioned to Public Works, and I met with Public Works, and, you know, but I'm, I'm hoping that the council can make it happen.
Thank you.
So, and, and I was wondering if possibly, on the, the litter thing, for the other Cooper and the streets up in Maryville, if you can make, expand that motion to include, well, Centennial and its many other areas, because I've heard, you know, a lot of people, even Fruit Hill Avenue, but, at, at least I presented on, on, on Centennial, and, and it's, and it's documented by, by the street, by the walk audit, so I don't know if you'd be willing to expand your motion to include other areas of, of the town to be swept as well.
I, I, that would be a good idea. I don't, I don't have any objection to that. I mean, I think Kenny and I would rather our district be litter-free first.
Oh, maybe I have to ask Mr. De, Councilman Di Lorenzo, and, Mr. President Odiello, and Counselor Brady, if you would do that, expand it to District Three.
Absolutely, and I'd like to entertain a motion, if I could, to send a communication to our EPW, addressing all the streets, and the matters that Mrs. Bucci has brought up.
Second.
Made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, second by Councilman Brady. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Maybe you're none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah, I have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Southern Sky Renewable Energy RI-MP LLC, discussion of possible vote with regards to the following. A, transfer of the membership interest of Southern Sky Renewable Energy RI-MP LLC to John Hancock Life Insurance Company. B, further amendments to new leasing agreement, lease agreement, and pilot agreement related to the, to the intended financing of the SOHA project located at North Province Landfill, Smithfield Road, North Province, Rhode Island. Or the motion to move this item to the September meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, second by Councilman Brady, any questions? Maybe you're none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah, I have it. Item number seventeen. Beta Corp. Council President Odiello requests discussion and possible vote concerning land on Beta Corp. I've had this item on the agenda several times. The property owner had Beta Corp and myself, and finally had the opportunity to meet at the site. I drove by, he wasn't there, and vice versa. This gentleman purchased this home, and it's a very, very, very nice home, he's done a lot of work to it. And there's a small parcel of land along the side of the road that the town owns, it's town property. His fence abuts this property, however, there's, and there's a house... However, there's, and there's a house across the street. And that is the only other house on that road. I believe that we, the town, should either abandon this property to the gentleman that owns the house or come up with a maintenance schedule to take care of it. What's happened is it's become all overgrown. And it's really an eyesore for this gentleman's property, which is, again, very, very nice and well manicured. There's also very large trees that are hanging over Beta Corp that are hanging right into the gentleman's property across the street. In case they're in a storm and those trees were to come down, they'd go right into the house across the street. He would love to either maintain those trees, however, it's not his property, he can't. So what I'd like to do is send a letter to the administration setting up a meeting between myself, the owner of the house on Beta Corp, the owner of the house and the property across the street, and the administration to see if we can either A, abandon this small parcel of land to the homeowner or come up with a maintenance schedule with our EPW to maintain the property.
So move.
Second.
Motion been made by Counselor DeLorenzo, second by Counselor Brady. Is there any questions? Sir?
Tom Hockey, 20 Andover Street. Question about the property is the property that we have for the town. Is it, is there an easement on that, on that property that we own?
I'm not sure.
Okay, can we find that out?
Yes.
Thank you. How large is the property that we own, that this town own?
How large?
Twenty by fifty, fifty by twenty, you know, how large?
Twenty-one.
Are we given, how much are we giving away? Would we be potentially be giving away to this person on Beta?
Maybe ten feet.
Okay, that's, that's an answer. Okay. What, is just for this one person, the ten feet? Is there any cost value to the, if we were to sell that to that person?
Absolutely not.
None?
None.
The property is worth zero?
Zero.
Okay. Maybe a realtor might be able to find a price for it before we maybe sell him that piece of property so we wash our hands of the expensive maintenance and everything else, since it's not a leased property. Well, we don't know if it's a leased property, that's right.
That was only a suggestion I made.
That's right, so it could be three, it could be three possibilities in.
Or we can come up with a maintenance schedule for our EPW to take care of the property. However, the way abuts this guy's property, it's basically like a sidewalk along his property.
Yeah.
It actually would be easy for the town to either need local maintenance or maintain it. They have to, you know, we have to do something there though.
Yeah, one, one, two, or three, sell the property to the gentleman.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm just giving another option to us. So we're buying property left and right for whatever. But I'm just saying, let's recoup something back so we don't just throw the money away. And if we're going to be doing work for him, and number two, let's make sure we can possibly just wash our hands of it and sell it to him. It may be a good thing to have a realtor look at it or whoever does that for the town.
It's a great idea.
That's a thought.
All right.
Can we look into, is that possible, something we could look into?
That was all part of this motion that I-
Well, I have three, I'm just looking for three. We had two, I just want to throw three in, if we could.
I don't think anyone on this council is going to give anything away that's not valuable.
Well, we were, with one and two, no three.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my point, if we could add that, I'd appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 18, No Parking on Fatima Drive. Council President Odiello requests discussion and possible vote on no parking signs on Fatima Drive. I'm going to make a motion to send this to the ordinance committee.
So move.
Second.
Motion been made by Counselor Stefanis, second by Counselor Brady. Any questions? Any and all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah, guys have it. Item number 19, Brook Street. Council President Odiello requests discussion and possible vote on the property on Brook Street. Myself and Counselor DeLorenzo have been working on this matter. There is a property on Brook Street that is in horrible condition. The police did go by there the other day to check on the three unregistered cars on the property. Mike Conavalli was out of town. He will be addressing that now that he's back. They could not go onto the property, but they're monitoring to see if those cars move. So I'm going to make a motion to move that off the agenda as that's being held up.
So move, second.
Motion been made by Counselor Juski, second by Counselor DeLorenzo. Item number 20, Sewer Backups. Counselor Stefanis requests discussion and possible vote on sewer backups on Birchwood Drive, Benjamin Drive, and Arrow Street. Counselor?
Mr. President, thank you. I listed three streets here tonight because, well, one, occurrences on those streets have been brought to my attention, but there are many others that I wasn't able to list. So I want that kind of to stick with everybody this evening. The other thing I want to ask before I really get into this is, just from the council, how many people have backflow preventers on their house? So we have two people out of seven.
I recommend everyone get them.
Okay. And that's, and I agree with you, based on the situations some of these people were in. But that's where my problem lies. I don't have one on my house. I never thought of putting one into, on my house. And if I had to, I would really have an issue with that. That's basically me buying an insurance policy in the form of some mechanism that's going to get attached to my house. So in the event the sewer backs up, I'm not getting raw sewage into my property. Now, I listed three streets here. So Birchwood Drive, I know of a potential claim that's going to be coming to us that's above $20,000. Arrow Street, probably north of $15,000 to $20,000. Benjamin Drive, I know of one that's $25,000. I know of probably four or five other that are somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000 each. And the problem I have with this is, let's take Benjamin Drive. So you have multiple occurrences of sewer backups that occur that infect, I'm going to use the word infect, because they created substantial damage to individuals' homes. Those individuals did what they needed to do, which was bring in a company to remediate the problem, you know, pump the sewage out, clean their stuff, whatever the case may be, rebuild whatever parts of their home were damaged. Then they filed a claim with the town's insurance company. And the town's insurance company denied them. I have a problem with that, and I'll tell you why I have a problem with that. I don't, I haven't read this, but when I called up and said, hey, what happened on Benjamin Drive? Oh, we pulled a boulder out of the sewage line, a boulder. So it seems to me that a blockage occurred. It seems to me that most of these people listed here, if not all, have been affected by the damage from these sewer lines, whatever the reason may be. It's not like somebody accidentally hit the pipe in their house and raw sewage came flying in and then they tried covering it up. Case after case after case, you have individuals here who are chasing the town's insurance company. And the insurance company is basically saying, we deny our claim. The town in North Providence has done everything it could in order to ensure that sewer backups don't happen by properly maintaining them and flushing them out. I know for a fact, I call DPW at least four times a year for various residents for sewers to be flushed out. And I'm sure a lot of you up here do also. So the insurance company denies the claim by basically saying, the town did its proper maintenance. And, you know, so sorry for your loss, but you might want to also install a backflow preventer. I don't know why I can't say that. And they're not cheap, $2,500 to $3,000. I have seven residents, six or seven residents who live on Birchwood Drive who installed them out of fear that their neighbor across from them has sustained $24,000 worth of damage. Had to have a company come in, live in our home, had to remove everything from the property, clean the property out and rebuild it. I don't know if that's the message this council wants to send its residents by saying, file a claim with the insurance company. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like the insurance agent, and I would also like the insurance company present. I want to know how many claims they've denied for, recently, for sewer backup since October. And I would like them to explain to us how they can deny a claim from an individual on Benjamin Drive where a boulder, a boulder. I want to know how a boulder got into a sewer line, but a boulder was removed from there. And I understand that freaks occurrences happen. But you have six individual homes on Benjamin Drive alone. We have an individual here who lives on Arrow Street. We've passed multiple requests for Arrow Street to have an engineer go in and reconfigure the storm drains on Arrow. So that, there's a street dealing with two problems, excess water from storms and a sewer backup. But to me, it doesn't make sense. And then just in a small area, if you take from Birchwood School and you take it down to Arrow, Arrow Street, you're probably looking at less than a quarter of a mile. There's probably 14 individuals that were brought to my attention who within the last year have been affected by a sewer backup. To me, that sounds like something's not right and something really needs to be done. And I know DPW responds, so I'm not faulting DPW. I know DPW is responding. Every resident that I talked to said they picked up the phone, DPW came, advised them as to what their next steps were. But I just find it really difficult to understand how an individual could have paperwork that shows we flushed the line out, that shows we removed something hindering in that line. And then the insurance company, we're paying a premium to protect our residents. We're not paying, you know, when you think about it, the town, it's really not paying the premium for liability. It's paying the premium to basically protect its residents. And I don't feel we're doing that. So I asked this council to send a letter to the insurance agent and the insurance company asking them to come in, asking them to explain to us, just on these three roads, how many claims they received and how many they denied.
Okay, motions been made by Counselor Stefanis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor DeLorenzo. Any questions? Any and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 21, No Through Traffic. Counselor Stefanis requests discussion and vote on no through traffic on Birchwood Drive at the intersections of Lexington Avenue, Palom Street, and Lee Avenue. Counselor?
Mr. President, I put this on the agenda tonight because my four years sitting, almost four years sitting on this council, I've probably put in four humps, X amount of speed bumps, X amount of stop signs. And I, I've learned they don't really work. Police enforcement is the only thing that's going to work. But I have residents on Birchwood Drive who, and I live adjacent, I live in the neighborhood over on the other side of the school, so I walk my dog a lot. I notice the traffic on Birchwood Drive. Birchwood Drive to me is Rosner, Alexander, Atlantic, Orlando. There's just too many cars who just have no consideration for the people who live on those roads. They speed through, they cut through. So the residents on Birchwood Drive have asked if we can put up no through traffic signs on those intersections. Now, I don't know if that's the answer, so I'm going to ask that we refer this to the ordinance committee. So, and also if we could send a letter to the police department asking them to give us an opinion.
Okay, motion been made by Counselor Stefanis.
Second.
Second by Counselor DeLorenzo. Any questions? Any and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 22, Audit of Finances. Counselor Juski requests discussion and possible vote on why the school committee is paying for an audit of finances of the school department. Counselor?
Yeah. Several months ago, we had a person who worked for the school department who was caught taking some money out of a drawer, amounted to like 40 bucks. They had him arrested, they prosecuted, they put this guy through the meat grinder. We just recently see a story in the newspaper about a superintendent who supposedly took $7,000. And we're paying now for an audit as to what she took, what she didn't take, what's going on. And it wasn't turned over to the state police. I don't understand why they didn't turn this whole thing over to the state police. Because the state police would have been more than happy to come in and do the audit for nothing. And the taxpayer wouldn't have had to pay for the audit. So I would like to send a letter to the school committee, having them explain to us why we're paying for an audit and why we're not going all the way back to when all these credit cards were passed out. And why we didn't turn it over to the state police.
Motion been made by Counselor Juski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor DeLorenzo, is there any questions? Any and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 23, Handicap Parking. Counselor Amory, your request, discussion and possible vote to introduce an ordinance providing handicap parking in front of 78th Avenue.
And before you even go any further, all you have to do is tell Mary Ann and they'll put handicap parking in front of those.
Yes, so I did confer legal counsel first. And apparently that is the way they've been doing it, the way our ordinance is worded. It's kind of vague and it seems like maybe an ordinance should be introduced with each separate sign. So just out of an abundance of caution, I figured I'd put it on the agenda.
No, you just got to just go to the point.
Be that as it may, I did advise the resident to get a copy of her placard. Part of the issue is that there is some mobility issues, so she's the, just to give you a little bit of history, she's the sole caretaker of her 28-year-old son who was involved in a car accident in December. He's now paralyzed from the neck down. And due to a lack of anybody else to care for him, she's had a hard time even getting out of the house just to come here to give a copy of his placard. So counsel, legal counsel, attorney Welch did draft an ordinance. I'd still like to, you know, submit it for your approval, but I have advised the resident to come over and if she can, if she can, who's even willing to go, you know, pick it up for her and bring it here. So I'm just waiting to get back from her. I don't know if we should pass it off or-
I introduce the audit to a public hearing. Take care of it until now, September will take care of it.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to introduce the ordinance to a public hearing pending the providing of the documentation to the town clerk's office by the resident.
Second.
Motion been made by Counselor Amory, second by Counselor Brady. Any questions? Any and all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 24, Garfield Street Traffic Patterns. Counselor Amory, your request, discussion and possible vote regarding increasing safety by improving and altering traffic patterns on Garfield Street. Counselor?
Thank you. So the issue with Garfield Street is similar to the one that Counselor Stefanis just brought up with regards to Birchwood Drive, which has always been an issue and something I've heard about. I also agree with the councilmen that speed bumps typically aren't the solution. Enforcement is, or the altering of traffic patterns. Over the past couple of years on the council, quite a few residents of Garfield have reached out to me. I've, you know, encouraged the police to increase their presence there. But recently, and they're in the audience tonight, the St. Pierre family invited us over. And I stood outside with them for about a half an hour and we just watched the traffic literally fly through. It's a very narrow street, a lot of the residents on the street park on the street, which only further constricts it. So what I wanted to do, and I'm sure they'll want the opportunity to speak, and we obviously encourage that. But I want to make three motions, but the first motion I'm going to make is with regards to obviously refer and get to the ordinance committee. But I specifically am making a motion to refer this matter to the ordinance committee and invite the DPW, I'm sorry, DPW director and the community police officer to attend and voice their opinion on the possible following solutions. Reducing the speed limit on Garfield Street, installing of speed humps, size restrictions on vehicles, stop sign placement, and changing of traffic patterns.
Motion been made by Counselor Amory, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brady, any questions on that motion?
Mr. President, I do.
Counselor?
So I walked Garfield Street yesterday, so I can tell you it's just as bad as any other street. But when you talk about altering traffic patterns, what do you mean by that?
Well, rather than tie us into one idea, I, I, I think what I'm saying is, you know, there was some suggestion by the residents, and it's not just the Saint Piers. There was actually a handful of neighbors that came out of either making it a limited, a throughway. So for example, the, the issue is people are cutting from Garfields and Franklin to get from Charles Street to Mineral Spring, cutting off the, the traffic, especially during rush hour. So either making it a one-way for a portion of the street, or perhaps limiting the flow during certain times of day. Kind of kicking around some of those potential solutions.
Cool.
Okay, motion been made, second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Councilman, Mr. President, I just had two other motions.
Okay.
Quickly, we know that the mayor has been an advocate in the past of increasing community police presence in the actual neighborhoods during the area patrols. So I wanted to make a motion to send a layer, a letter to the mayor's office and the police chief, asking that the officers that patrol that particular area to increase their patrols of specifically Garfield Street.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Amorici, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Brady, any questions? Maybe none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. You want to make a third motion?
Third motion, just very simply. I'll just make my other motion, quick. The third motion was just to, a motion to continue this matter to the September fourth regular meeting, pending the findings of the ordinance committee.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Amorici, second by Councilwoman Brady. Sir?
Good evening, President, good evening, council. My name is Alan Saint Pierre. I live at fifty-one Garfield Street. Imagine for a second, if you had the power to go into the future, find out some really important information, and then bring it back and warn people. Unfortunately, because of a medical issue, I had a heart attack about three, four months ago now. I've had the opportunity to sit out front of my house and just watch and observe the maniacal travel that goes on on that street. It is definitely a cut-through from Betty's to the liquor store or Twins. But now I think that because we have Cumberland Farms, and we don't know the traffic that will happen because of that, guaranteed the traffic and the shortcut will become even busier. So, I mean, I, I just thought that unfortunately Bristol just went through this, so I'm just gonna read just a couple of headlines. Boy, six years of age, hit and killed by a vehicle in Bristol. Vehicle strikes and kills a Somerset boy. Town warned of poor visibility at bike path intersection four years ago. So I'm telling all of you guys and ladies that going into the future, coming back, it's not a matter of if it will happen. It's going to happen. I've witnessed it. Imagine when you were six years old or eight years old riding a bike. So I'm hoping that tonight I'm the voice of those that are six and eight years old that just wanna be kids. But I'm also here to represent the law-abiding citizens that know that, right now I think the speed limit is twenty on Garfield Street. I believe that it should be reduced to fifteen. But I also realize that perhaps making part of it a one-way could alleviate some of this racing that goes on. You know, I grew up back when Gill and Platt was Gill and Pond. So that race from Twins deep into Gill and Platt, it's getting worse and worse. It's inevitable that someone is going to get hurt on that street. During the winter, because of parking situations, tractor trailers that go through there ride up right on sidewalks to get from A to B. I have a Waze app. I'm sure we all have a, a GPS. Many times, depending on the traffic patterns on Mineral Spring Avenue and Charles Street, the Waze app tells the person to go down Franklin and go up Garfield Street. So I, I'm hoping that tonight we can all be proactive rather than unfortunately in Bristol, reactive. Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. President. I am glad that you're recovering. You look great. But I just wanna make a point of reference. So once the utility work is completed in that neighborhood, the individuals who live on Lojai Boulevard came to this council a year ago with a petition to install a permanent speed home. And to be honest with you, I said it ten minutes ago, I'll say it again. The minute somebody comes to the speed hump, it seems like they come to a screeching halt. They go over the speed bump, and then you hear the engine race for the rest of the street. The problem with the situation in this town, and I can't speak for any other district, but I'll speak for the one that Councilman Amorici and I represent. There are sixteen streets within that district that are heavy cut-through streets due to the high volume of traffic that Mineral Spring Avenue receives on a daily basis. So putting speed bump humps in may be a solution, altering the traffic pattern may be a solution. And as a community, you need to look at, okay, I'm gonna solve the problem here on this street, but I'm pushing the problem to the next street. So everybody who comes into that neighborhood, once that speed hump is installed on Lojai, will start using Adams or Franklin. And they'll completely, you know, stop using Lojai to cut through. Whatever occurs through the ordinance committee with your street, you're just gonna push the traffic to Cleveland. Or any other street in the surrounding area. The problem in this town is we need enforcement. And not enforcement where, you know, our police department does a lot, and I commend everything that they do on a daily basis. But I've been saying this up here for years, for three years now. And I think Councilwoman Brady, Juicy, Councilman Juicy, Councilman Odiello, and Councilman Fiolo, who have been here for the last three years with me, can attest that our offices, we need to create a traffic division, and that traffic division needs to be where we constantly write tickets. That's the only way we're all gonna live in peace. And it's not the end-all solution, but it's the only viable solution to stop signs, speed humps, speed bumps, traffic pattern altering. Until we start doing that vigorously on a daily basis like Pawtucket does, we're just gonna have the sixty-five thousand people that come through our town daily via Mineral Spring figure another shortcut to get through. And I'll, and I'll tell you, just not to keep us here any longer, but I'll tell you, I, I requested of this council to install a stop sign on Atlantic Boulevard. I walked Atlantic Boulevard two weeks ago. I, I was fearing for my life. And I walked it with a resident who lives there, and she looked at me, and she said, Brady, the stop signs slow them down, brings them to the midpoint of the street. She said, the minute they get through the stop sign, they get back up to forty miles an hour again. And I sat on her porch and couldn't believe it. And I actually reached out to the police department that following Monday and said, come on, you guys gotta be kidding me. A child got hit, almost got hit on the corner of, of one of those streets. Hence the stop sign. So I agree with you. We are gonna see more headlines like they're seeing in Bristol if we, as a community, as a town, don't stop pulling traffic enforcement at a priority. Thanks.
Okay, motion been made, second, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-five, Rome Avenue. Councilman Amorici requests discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Impossible vote regarding installing signage in the vicinity of Rome Avenue.
Thank you. I've already reached out to the DPW to install the sign, but they haven't as of yet, so I'll, I'll just move forward with this motion anyways. At the corner of Rome, Rome Ave. and Pleasantview Drive, there used to be a specific sign for Rome, because there's a bend there and you can't really see the street. The issue has been with deliveries, especially in the advent of the day of Amazon. A lot of people aren't getting deliveries to their home, because when the road sides were redone, the, the specific Rome Ave. sign with the arrow pointing in the direction of the street was never replaced. So I'm just making a motion to send a letter to DPW, asking them to replace the sign at the corner of Rome Ave. And Pleasantview Drive directing traffic towards Rome Ave.
I have a question.
Second.
Are you referring to that little cut-through street?
Yes.
Not the curve at the bottom?
It's, the sign was on a, a utility pole near.
It's like halfway down Pleasantview.
Yes, yes.
That's called North Rome Avenue.
That's North Rome?
Yes.
Okay.
Just so you know, I'm very familiar with the area. And I don't think a sign's been up in years. There's no houses, it just connects to Rome, but it's called North Rome Avenue.
Okay.
If you wanna do a motion, that's, that's, that's what should be there, street sign.
Yeah, motion been made by Councilman Amorici, North Rome Avenue. Second by Councilman Brady, any questions?
Thank you.
Maybe none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Councilman DeStefanis asked to go back to number twenty-two, audit of finances. Councilman Juicy requests discussion and possible vote on why the school committee is paying for an audit of finances of the school department. Councilman?
Mr. President, while it's on the agenda, I think, I think the council needs to be made aware of what occurred out of that audit. I think we also need to be made aware of what policies and procedures the school department's putting in place to ensure that this doesn't occur again, so I ask that we refer this to the finance committee.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Brady, any questions? Maybe none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-six, new homes on Fruit Hill Avenue. Councilman DiLorenzo requests discussion and possible vote on the condition of the street in front of new homes built by Imperial Investments on Fruit Hill Avenue. Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. As you can see, it's pretty self-explanatory. Some of the street where the new houses were built already has been done. The gas company took care of some of it. But the other parts have not been taken care of. So what I'd like to do is like to make a motion to send a letter to Imperial Investments to get those fixed.
Second.
Yeah, motion been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, second by Councilman Brady, any questions? Maybe none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-seven, tractor trailer traffic on Lexington Avenue. Councilman DiLorenzo requests discussion and possible vote on tractor trailer traffic on Lexington Avenue. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Anyone who's gone from Douglas Avenue up to Lexington can see when a tractor trailer was going. First of all, I'm not so sure if it's a bridge or not, but there's something with a fifteen-ton weight.
It's a bridge.
It is a bridge.
So when, when you're coming up, the people coming down Lexington, and I talked to Councilman DeStefanis about this, as well as Councilman Amorici, because we both, we coincide, one side of Lexington, the other side of Lexington. When you're coming down this, you cannot see. And a tractor trailer going the, first of all, on, on Douglas, has to get to the other side to go into that street. Then they have to go up a blind hill while the cars are coming down. So what I'd like to do is send it to the ordinance, make a motion to send it to the ordinance committee, have them take a good look at it, and maybe we can change that.
I will second that motion.
Yeah, motion been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, second by Councilman Brady. Councilman?
I'd also like to make the suggestion that we have a traffic study done on that area to see if we can put a weight limit, if they would advise a weight limit for no through trucking for a certain weight.
Where that bridge is, is a fifteen-ton weight limit. So if in fact we do get it through the ordinance committee for them to come up, we won't have to worry about that bridge right then and there, but maybe the rest of Lexington Avenue? It's possible. But I think tractor trailers should be entering through Mineral Spring versus Douglas, so.
It, it would seem that that would be a better route.
Well, like I said, it's a, there's a dead spot there.
I know I see them go by my house. I've been in the same house for forty-one years, and I do see them go. I wasn't aware that a tractor trailer would attempt to come up Route Seven, understanding.
Yeah, they do it every day.
That's the way they could do it now, every day. So, so a few of the residents there, on my side, and on Councilman DeStefanis' and Councilman Amorici' have called me and said, you know, there's accidents going on here. People hitting the wall, people driving on the grass. So I'd like to send it, make a motion to send it to ordinance.
Mr. President, when we send it to ordinance, can I just add that Bernie Salvatore, the director, DPW, be invited that evening? Bernie seems to have a lot of knowledge concerning traffic pattern, you know, and I'm, and again, I agree with Councilwoman Brady, we need the traffic study. But I would also invite Bernie, just because he's familiar with the bridge, he's familiar with the way a truck turns, he's familiar with the age of the bridge, the lifespan of that bridge, and I would just invite him.
Speaking to Bernie Salvatore, he's in absolute agreement that they don't belong going there. Now, he, their place is on the far line. And he, he says, my tractor trailers are coming through, they don't belong coming down. So yes, it would be great to have Bernie there, yes.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, second by Councilman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-eight, public comment. Councilman DiLorenzo requests discussion and possible vote. Public comment, second, at the end of monthly town council meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. This is something that I've always wanted to talk about, you know, having constituents come up. Having transparency while they're here, being accessible, all of us in the town council being accessible to everyone. Knowing people can speak at the end of the meeting is something that I like. You know, I have trouble sometimes when I talk about this, because I don't want it to be political. And I don't want it to, to be someone with an agenda making it difficult. So I'd like to open for discussion, and I'm actually open for discussion here now. If anyone thinks that it should, maybe should go to the ordinance committee, and we can sit down and talk about it. Something that I would like to listen to what you guys have to say.
I agree with that. It should be discussed. There's a lot to that.
There is a lot to that. There is a lot to that.
I think it should be discussed.
Well, then I'll make a motion to send it to the ordinance committee.
I'll second it.
Yeah, motion been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, second by Councilman DeStefanis, is there any questions on that? Maybe none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, councilman?
I wanted to ask you to go back to twenty-seven.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Councilman Brady's asking if we can go back to number twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I do wanna make a motion that we have a traffic study done on Lexington Avenue concerning tractor trailers passing through the area. And just a reminder to the council that in 2014, we voted unanimously to have a civil engineer do a comprehensive traffic study of the entire neighborhood. And had that particular study been approved that we voted on, it did go through purchasing and was approved. Commonwealth Engineering was selected to do the study. At that time, no action was taken by the administration, because they found an engineer to do the study pro bono. However, that engineer focused on a limited number of streets. Had the original traffic study been done, it included, it, which was, as I said, a comprehensive study, it included measurement of the corners of the radii of eight locations in the entire neighborhood concerning the traveling of tractor trailers for safety, as well as checking the truck turning radii for each intersection. And among the streets that were to be included in the eight were Lexington Avenue at Mineral Spring, as well as Lexington Avenue at Route Seven. So
Thank you.
I would, I would like to move forward with that, if someone would consider seconding that.
Yeah, motion been made by Councilman Brady, second by Councilman DiLorenzo, any questions? Maybe none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-nine, joint poll location, discussion and possible vote with regard to petitions from Verizon, England, and Narragansett Electric Company for new joint polls of following locations. A, Jessma Circle, B, Salem Drive, C, Mineral Spring Avenue, D, Charles Street, and E, Johnson Street. I have a motion to approve the joint poll location.
Mr. President, may I, may I speak on this? Um, so, as we all noticed this evening, item twenty-nine has five, five poll location requests. We have five poll location requests, not because all of a sudden National Grid decided to, you know, put, install polls. It's because we on this council have not approved poll locations, because we've sent national It's because we on this council have not approved poll locations, because we've sent National Grid, what? Seven letters in the last two years asking them to come. So, I got a call early this, early last week, um, by the administration who said, "Hey, you know, what are you holding this up?" I said, "I'm not, the only one holding this up. The entire council's holding it up because National Grid refuses to appear in front of us and explain to us how it is going to properly maintain the property they own in this town." Between Councilman Amory and myself, just in the last two years, we've probably brought seven or eight pieces of property that they own, just in the Maryville section, to light. So, it was also explained to me that one of these polls, um, that they need approval for is to move, uh, the electricity so they could start construction at Stephen Only School. So I make a motion that we approve the one the administration needs not to hinder the construction schedule of our schools, but the rest of them can sit on hold until National Grid comes here and appears in front of us and gives us an explanation to how they're gonna properly maintain those properties in District Two. If they own property in one and three, I'm sure you can add those to the list.
So you wanna approve the one on Salem Drive on the Sunday?
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and, and I think the one on Mineral Spring might be needed for the public safety complex. If it is, then, you know, that's fine. But the rest of them can wait. Sorry to be that way, but, I mean.
Well, I know that we've reached out several times.
Correct.
Several times.
Correct.
I was informed that National Grid is working with the town on these properties, and we just weren't informed, so. Me that is made, uh.
Well, well, let's have that discussion. Is everybody comfortable with the fact that National Grid is working with someone in the town? Does that make everybody comfortable? If that makes everybody comfortable, then, then, okay, then let's go down a different road. But seven letters in two years, a non-response, and I could drive by three of those properties today, tonight, and they're a mess.
I, I, I agree, I, I mean, I, I've been on the council twenty months now, whatever it's been, twenty-one months, and, and we've been told numerous times that they're working with the administration, but we've never had any actual proof of that or, or the, the contents of any of those discussions, so, I, I mean, I'm not really comfortable with that assertion, but.
All right, so let's stick to the motion to, to approve Salem Drive and Mineral Spring Avenue.
Approve the poll locations that are needed for the construction of the schools and the public safety complex.
Second.
The motion's been made by Councilman Stephanis, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo.
How are they all manning? How are they gonna, how are they gonna tie in Jocelyn Street?
Watch.
Any questions? Any non-alaws in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item thirty, board appointments. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to appointments to be made to the following boards. Okay. Board of Canvases. Anthony Campanelli, sixteen Falcon Ave, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero-two-nine-one-one, to whom it may concern. I, Anthony Campanelli, resign as chairman of Board of Canvases effective immediately due to health issues. Sincerely, Anthony Campanelli. I have a motion to accept.
Go.
Second.
B, please pension board. Okay, motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. To whom it may concern, pursuant to procedures, rules, and regulations regarding the pension board, I am appointing Christopher Catarubi as the FOP member with over ten years, and Jason Berlingue as a member with under ten years. These appointments shall supersede any previous appointments by the FOP. There are any questions, please feel free to call me at four-one-six-four-zero-seven-nine-eight-six. Sincerely, Dennis Stone, FOP thirteen president. I have a motion to approve. Christopher Catarubi and Jason Berlingue. Motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Stephanis, any questions? Any non-alaws in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. C, historic district commission, two appointments. Also checked to see if much Carvalho can be a member as minimum housing officer. I have a motion to reject. Mary Angela Angela's, town clerk, North Providence, town clerk, office, two thousand Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero-two-nine-one-one, Ms. Angela Angela's. At regular meeting of the North Providence Historic District Commission held on June twelfth, two thousand eighteen, it was voted to recommend the appointment of Rui Almeida and Joseph Giamaco Esquire to be appointed members of the North Providence Historic District Commission, and then Michael Carvalho becoming an alternate member of the North Providence Historic District Commission. Attached, please find the resume and biography of Rui Almeida and the letter of app, of application of Joseph Giamaco Esquire. Very truly owes roots to Chief Care of North Providence Historic District Commission. Okay, I have a motion to appoint Rui Almeida and Joseph Giamaco.
Go.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? Any non-alaws in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We're gonna wait from the, to get an answer from the council solicitor on Mike Carvalho. Item number thirty-one, claims submitted. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to claims received from the following. A, Amanda Colly. B, Marcel Duerva and Francis E. Romero. C, Jason Cook. D, Catherine Krasnowski. E, Catherine Principe by attorney general, Ger- Gerard Masellis. F, Hui Ling Hung. G, Oscar Estrada. H, Sylvia and Richard Valanti. I, Conchetta De Julio. J, Virginia Chase. K, Linda Pracassini. L, William and Tracy Morai- Moran by attorney Edwin Roy. I have a motion to, prefer to define, uh, claims.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Stephanis, any questions? Any non-alaws in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thirty-two, claims committee report. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claims committee report and approval, denial, or referral of the claims considered flawed, presented by Councilman DiLorenzo. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just gonna stop by saying as a reminder, the North Province Town, of North Province Claims Committee, we don't handle claims that are over ten thousand, and those claims are automatically forwarded to the town's insurance carrier. We have no bearing over their decision. With that said, a sewer claim for Said Deed, that was forwarded to the town's insurance carrier. Virginia Chase sewer claim forwarded to the town's insurance carrier. Sylvia and Richard Valanti sewer claim forwarded to the town's insurance carrier. Conchetta De Julio sewer claim forwarded to the town's insurance carrier. Guerrero and Romero sewer claim forwarded to the town's insurance carrier. Moran, this was an appeal, this was resubmitted to the town's insurance carrier. Pracassini sewer claim forwarded to the town's insurance carrier. Principe, this was a bodily injury claim, this is forwarded to the town's insurance carrier. Krasnowski sewer claim that was denied. Hugh Ling Hung, damage to auto from pothole approved for three hundred dollars. Cook, damage to auto from pothole approved, three hundred dollars. Estrada, damage to property from a plow, approved, one hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, Ms. Amanda Colly, damage to auto, this was approved at fifty percent, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. And appeal on Douglas, damage to auto from pothole was denied, again.
So.
I have a question.
Me too.
Councilman?
The, uh, sewer, all the ones with the sewer, are they in the, in general area that, uh, Councilman Stephanis was talking about?
Some of them, yes.
Is any on that Garfield Street?
No.
So you, so there were seven sewer claims referred to the insurance company?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes.
All in the general area?
No, th- these are spread out, I, I recognize their names, they're, they're pretty much, though, yeah, they're confined to that area, but then there are some that are on the outskirts of that area. But seven sewer claims head into an insurance company in one council meeting? Seems to me that.
Well, there was an issue on a particular street. What exactly the issue was, they'll determine it based on the investigation. On who was negligent, if the town was negligent. Because that's what it's based on.
And that's the biggest reason why I asked for the motion to send to the carrier and the agent to come in, to explain?
I agree, I agree. Whether or not they're gonna come in, is another story, because it turns it, it's a, it, this'll turn into a legal matter.
The problem we have is Councilman DiLorenzo and myself have been trying to work on this for years. The town's former insurance carrier had a certain rate. The one we went with now has a, is a cheaper rate, but a higher deductible. Unfortunately, the deductible's ten thousand dollars. A lot of these sewer claims fall right in that range of ten thousand dollars, whether they're right under it or right over it. And that's the problem. Obviously, our claims budget is only twenty-five thousand dollars. The claims budget was constructed to, to take care of pothole damages to cars, if our plows rip up your front lawn, things like that. What's happening is these sewer claims are now being put in the claims committee, and these claims, we just don't have the budget to do it. And unfortunately, the sewer backups are being shifted to our insurance company, and unfortunately denied a lot. So there has to be a solution. Councilman DiLorenzo and myself have been trying to work on this for years, and it's just, you know, kids is nowhere.
Thank you, Mr. President. So you, so you have an insurance company coming, am I correct? Is that, is that part of your motion?
I made a motion, yeah, for our insurance carrier and agent.
Different insurance company?
No, 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 the one that, the one that all these claims are gonna go to, because in my opinion here, it seems that, you know, again, I'm not a hundred percent involved in the day-to-day operations of the town nor the insurance company. But it seems to me here that our sewer claims seem to be increasing. So, I don't know if we need to change, you know, I, I'm gonna make this for the record, DPW does an amazing job. The resources they have, they get it done. But maybe we need to look at how we're maintaining them, maybe we need to switch insurance companies. I, I, I just think that we really need to look at it, because I, I thi- I'm sitting, listening to our residents who are getting hurt by it.
My question is, why are we having so many sewer problems all of a sudden? I've been on this council a long time, and I don't remember this many sewer problems.
Speaking with DPW, I've never heard of a boulder, I know you mentioned that previously. They're finding rags, mops, towels, diapers.
How are these getting in the sewer?
That's not the town's negligence, because they're cleaning sewers, they're maintaining the sewers. So if somebody's, however they're getting in there, that's not negligence on the town.
And I understand that. I get that.
Like, how's that stuff getting in?
I don't know, I, again, I don't, I've never seen, uh.
I mean, you can't flush a mop down the toilet, you can't flush towels and stuff like that down the toilet.
Okay, so, uh, do you wanna make a motion to accept the claims committee?
Yes, I make a motion to accept this, uh, report as presented.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo, any questions? Any non-alaws in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number thirty-three, tax abandons. Town council discussion and action, possible vote with regard to the list of tax agenda received from the tax assessor in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-one cents in motor vehicles, and two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and three cents in tangibles.
Make the motion to accept.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady, any questions? Any non-alaws in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number thirty-four, tax abatements under a thousand. Town council discussion and an action, possible vote for approval of the list of tax abatements under a thousand received from the tax assessor in the amount of four hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-two cents in motor vehicles. I have a motion to abate.
Go.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady, any questions? Any non-alaws in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number thirty-five, tax border review abatements. Councilman?
May I go, may we go back to thirty-three?
Yeah, let me go to thirty-five.
Okay, sure.
Thirty-five, tax border review abatements. Town council discussion and action, possible vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements from the Board of Tax Review in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and nine cents.
Go.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brady, any questions? Any non-alaws in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number thirty-three.
You're going fast. Seventy-five, sixty-eight is for what? Is, is it real estate tax abatement?
It's a, it's a commercial property, I, I'm not familiar with it, but I can tell you, it's a commercial property tax abatement that the tax border review took under consideration and voted in favor of authorizing. So basically, under the law, their vote stands.
Okay. Councilman, may I go back to thirty-three?
Yeah.
So, what's the two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and three cents? Who does that for? If that's what it is, I might be paid for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Town council discussion and action, tax abandons.
Tangibles.
Read this. Yeah. Who, who checked the tangibles? Who wanted to go look at the stuff to take off two hundred and sixty thousand dollars off the?
No, that, that's an addition.
They're adding that to the tax board.
We're getting money.
Don't go away. Forget this, good.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Go.
Second.
He was so quick, Amanda.
Any non-alaws in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yeah, right.
Troy Good?